They came back with us on different dates later in the month.
Greetings, everyone.
I got it today. I'll send it over to you. He was in court all day.
Greetings, everyone. We're going to get underway. Welcome to tonight's meeting. September 9, 2024. It is a joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen, Board of Health. I know Water Sewer was invited. I'm not sure if they have a quorum.
Not yet.
Not yet. And as a matter of public record, we are being recorded. The first order of business, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we get started, the Board of Selectmen would like to send its condolences to the family of George Beebo. George passed away in the last week. He was 95. He was, I believe, the last living World War II veteran in the town of Dudley. Don't hold me to that. That's what I was told. I've known George for close to 40 years. I believe he entered the Coast Guard when he was 17. And he served with honor and distinction. And he was one of the true advocates for the veterans in town. If he went to a parade, or a funeral, or any kind of function, George Beebo was there. And I know I speak for behalf of the Board and the town. We send condolences to George's family. So before we get started tonight, I'm just going to go over a couple ground rules before we start the regular agenda. Seated to my right is Town Council Attorney Jeff Blake. He's between Mr. Ruda and Mrs. Siggenevich. He's been here before. Public needs no introduction. To our left, Mary Jude Pigsley from DEP, Mark Baldi from DEP. They are here at the invitation of Mr. Ruda, who set this meeting up in order to get information out regarding the PFAS. When the public hearing starts, our intention is to let everyone have an opportunity to speak. We are going to limit it at first to a three-minute. Come up to the podium, please. It's not going to be a hard and fast three minutes unless there's repetitive questions asked, or if people choose to read a statement that needs to be addressed. If it's a legal question, we refer to Attorney Blake. If it's a regulatory question, we refer to the folks from DEP. I ask if you know who you're speaking to. I just introduce them. Address your questions through the chair. For example, Attorney Blake, I have a question. We're asking everyone to have the quorum. I'm sure we will be fine with that. We don't want to have to admonish anyone. If anyone is disruptive or disrespectful, you will get one warning from the chair. If it continues to happen, the police chief has already volunteered to escort you out. We don't want to delve into a shouting match. Everyone will be heard that wants to be heard. If you have a second question, and time permits, we may loop back and let you come up a second time. So I ask people, if you have a statement that's not factual-based, you may not want to use up your three minutes. Mr. Siggenevich will keep the time. Again, it's not going to, we're not going to cut you off mid-question if it's deemed reasonable. If it's already been answered, Attorney Blake, for example, gets a second question. It's the same question. He will tell you that it was answered earlier. Please step aside for the next person. Again, our intention is to let everyone speak, and let's keep it respectful. This is a hot-button issue, and we really want to get some answers to this. I thank everyone in advance. First up on the agenda, Wesley Pettit, Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire June 30, 2027. What is the Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, point. Wesley Pettit, Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire June 30, 2027.
Motion, Mr. Landry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Siggenevich. Is Mr. Pettit here tonight, who would like to speak on this? He is not. All in favor, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
All in favor of the appointment, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. 2B is going to be passed over. The person who was asking to be appointed has withdrawn his name for consideration. 2C, Library Trustee, Jean Tilly, term to expire June 16, 2025. What is the Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to appoint Library Trustee Jean Tilly, term to expire June 16, 2025.
Motion by Mr. Landry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Johnson. Is Jean Tilly present? Yes, Jean, would you like to come up and say a few words to the town?
Why, sure.
Be one chance on camera, hopefully.
Okay, I get my three minutes, all right. Thank you for accepting my nomination. And I'm really looking forward to, I feel, to serving on the Board. I feel like the library has really energized recently, and I'm going to, I'm excited to be part of that. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jean. Nice to see you again.
It's nice to see you.
Call of the order, batter to a vote. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Welcome to the Board, Jean. Next up, reappointment. Central Mass Regional Planning Council Delegate Jonathan Ruda, term to expire August 1, 2025. What is the Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Landry.
Make a motion, reappoint Fiscal Year 25 CMRPC Delegate Jonathan Ruda, term to expire August 1, 2025.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Diana. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous appointment. Thank you for taking that, Mr. Ruda. 4A, One-Day All-Alcohol License, Polish National Alliance of Dudley, PNA, Customer Appreciation Day, September 15, 2024, 11:00 to 8:00 on the grounds of the club. Is there anyone here from the PNA? Please come up. Just remove your cap, sir, when you get up to the microphone. Thank you. Just state your name and your position at the club, please.
I'm Felicity Harney. I'm the secretary.
I'm Wayne Rosin, this is Chairman of the Board.
Good evening, folks.
Hi. So we would just like a one-day pass. We have construction, like that construction border thing, to border our property so that no one goes out the property. We've already talked to the people, the lady over there, and she said she talked to the ABCC, so we just are requesting some approval.
Have you spoken to the Police Department about your setup, your physical setup?
I have not, but we can definitely make an arrangement to go speak with them.
Chief Collins?
If it's something like they did the last couple of years, I would have no opposition to it.
No detail?
I believe the last couple of years, they've had no issues, so based on their good record, good behavior on the customers, I don't think they need to do that.
Fire and EMS, you good with that also?
Yep.
Mr. Ruda, we good with it, with their paperwork?
The paperwork's all in order. And just a little background, Mr. Chairman, this with, the state recently passed regulation that allows for outdoor liquor establishments to serve outdoors outside the premises. They didn't provide any guidance, so it's expected to be developed on a local level. So until we have a policy to be approved, we're taking this route and just granting one-day licenses until we can get something together for the Board's approval. And Olivia is spearheading that with the Health Agent and the Building Commissioner.
Okay. Chief, can you just, when they have everything set up, could you just have someone go up and just take a quick look, make sure it's as described? I know they haven't had an issue, but just have someone take a quick look at it. Just reach out, reach out to the chief when you're ready to go.
Okay, we'll be ready on Saturday, if that's okay. If you want to come around on Saturday to take a look.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant? Hearing none, what's the Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant the Polish National Alliance of Dudley, PNA, a one-day all-alcohol license, Customer Appreciation Day, Sunday, September 15, 2024, from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on the grounds of the club.
Excuse me, motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Landry. Any comments from the crowd? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Good luck, folks.
Thank you.
4B, Common Victual License, Boston Brunch Bites LLC, located 265 West Main Street. Owner, Thomas Rivera. Is Mr. Rivera here?
Yes.
Would you come up, please? Mr. Ruda, while he's coming up, is everything in order for this?
It is.
Sir, tell a little bit about yourself, what you've got going on.
My name is Thomas Rivera. We're looking to open a breakfast and lunch place for Boston Brunch Bites.
On 265 West?
265 West Main Street.
At the old, at the old Trophy Place?
It's next to Peter's.
Oh, there used to be a law office.
Oh, yeah, Rully's.
It's right next to the law office, yeah.
That's a blast from the past, and it's a great location right near the courthouse.
Yeah, same like golf clubs grip there.
Rings up the wires.
Yeah.
Tell a little bit about yourself, Chance, you have five minutes for free advertising.
Yeah, just, I always, I like to cook. I always wanted to open a restaurant, and we find a good location over here. Where from, I live in Worcester. We was always looking for a location there, but we never really found one. And we have a church in Webster, so we always used to look around here, and we found that place right there.
Excellent.
Yeah.
We wish you well. What's the Board's pleasure? Any questions for the applicant? Hearing none.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to grant a common victory license to Boston Brunch Bites LLC, located at 265 West Main Street, Dudley, Mass. Owner, Thomas Rivera.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Siggenevich. Seconded by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Stay right there, Mr. Rivera.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Stay right there. Next up is an orchestra entertainment license, Boston Brunch Bites LLC, 265 West Main, Dudley, Mass, Thomas Rivera. Tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Honestly, we wasn't, I wasn't looking to play anything. They just said we needed a license just in case we want to play, like, music or something. But I'm not really looking into that as much. They just said we needed it just in case we want to.
Mr. Ruda, is that accurate?
It gives them a little flexibility if they're interested in doing something like that down the road. Generally, that's what, it's part of the package usually when something like that opens up.
Don't have to come back if they want to.
Correct.
Excellent. Any questions from the Board? Hearing none, what's the Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Landry.
Make a motion for the orchestra entertainment license for Boston Brunch Bites LLC, located at 265 West Main Street, Dudley, Mass.
Second.
motion by Mr. Landry. Seconded by Mr. Johnson. Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
I'm just going to pass these around to be signed, Mr. Chairman.
While he's passing that around, next up, public business. Nichols College, looking for a parking waiver, requesting permission for parking waiver for annual homecoming event and football game, Saturday, September 21, 2024, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on the west side of Center Road, from the area of Healy Road to the area of the Olson Residence Hall. Somebody here presenting on behalf of Nichols? Mr. Ruda, how do you want to proceed with that?
Probably has the police chief to speak on it.
Right, and I'm going to recognize Kerry after that.
Just real quick, that's the homecoming event for Nichols College. They have hired four detail officers for that event. The only thing I would ask for is instead of Healy Road, to change that to the Dining Hall Center, to Olson Residence Hall. So it would take the traffic away from the intersection. Other than that, I would see no opposition as we have done it in the past years.
Mr. Siggenevich?
I'm going to make a motion to decline this, and I want to say why. There's no one here to discuss this. I have questions. And I think possibly, we've got a full house today. I know there have been outspoken people about some things with Nichols College, and I, I think they should have sent someone. I mean, we have rules and regulations in this town for a reason, and we don't, it might look like we rubber-stimple some things, but we really don't. And I, I'm not comfortable approving it with no one here to answer questions, of me, or of anyone else who wants them. So I'm going to make a motion that we decline the parking waiver request from Nichols College.
Pending further information, or pending?
Decline it.
Motion made to decline the request for permission to park. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Landry. So I'm going to echo a little bit what Kerry said. We generally ask someone to be here, especially for a waiver like this one. Isn't something that's allowed by bylaw. We usually have someone come in, so I'm going to probably vote in the affirmative for the, at least for further information, or Nichols will have to make another arrangement for their parking, in my opinion.
Okay. May I keep going?
May.
It's, it's not that big of a stretch of road, for one. For two, and I appreciate what the police chief said, I mean, if you've ever pulled out a Healy Road and looked to the right, imagine if there's cars parked near that bison there. You're not seeing anything. And my thought is, even if we approved it to stop at the dining hall, the dining hall's kind of connected to the building with the bison, and if they're not even going to show up to have a conversation, are they going to stay with those parameters? Or is someone going to sneak up? Who's the person that's going to be there to enforce that they're going to park where they say they are? I don't want any, I don't want to get broadsided there, and I don't want that to happen to any of you. And it's all could have been avoided with a conversation. We can't have the conversation. So that's why I said no. Thank you.
Yep. Any further comments from the Board? So there is a motion and a second to a flat denial of the request. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Extension, change of vote?
Me.
Extension? Let the record reflect 311, please. So next, before we start, would be 5B. I should have in the beginning introduced Rep. Marcy is present, if she wants to come up for a moment. And I believe there is a representative from Senator Fatman's office which may be here. She can come up also for a moment, want to step up to the podium, just, I mean, everyone knows who John is, but just give you a quick second just to, just in case there's someone that doesn't.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Come back.
Nice surprise. Welcome back, everybody. I haven't seen it a while. Had a great year, you know, legislatively, a lot that got done, but a lot that didn't get done. So I continue to keep my eye on things that, to pull local aid, you know, towards Dudley and the towns of the Siskiyou District. And I'm here with Amanda of Ryan Fatman's office. Amanda?
Hi, I'm just pulling up. Hi. I'm Amanda Helyer, District Director for Senator Fatman. I'm just pulling up our office hours, just so I can let you know when I'll be in town. So I'm going to grab that in a second. Is there anything else you want to say?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see everybody. Anybody needs anything, just give me a shout. Thank you.
Publicly, on behalf of the Board, thank Mr. Marcy. I know he's here for the DEP hearing, and Amanda from Senator Fatman's office, Senator Fatman reached out, is unable to make it. So he said he's, he said he was sending his number one, so get the best.
All right, sounds good. So, yeah, I'll be at the Dudley Public Library from 10:30 to 11:30 on the third Wednesday of every month for September, October, November. So please come by, and I look forward to meeting you then.
Thank you. So before we start the presentation, I am going to turn the floor over to the professionals. I am going to start with Attorney Blake, if he has something he would like to state for the record before we begin. I'm going to have Attorney Blake address the crowd, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank everyone for having me here tonight. Obviously, there's a large concern about PFAS contaminations in town. We've got a couple of sites. And after speaking with your town administrator, we thought that it would be very good for you to get an overview from the regulator, DEP. And so I congratulate and I thank John for putting this together, and I, I thank the DEP representatives for coming. I think it's something that the town has a lot of questions, and I think there's a lot of miscon, misunderstandings, misconceptions out there. And I hope that after we're done here tonight, that you guys will walk away with a much better understanding of kind of the broad scheme for enforcement, the broad scheme for regulation of these soils and contaminants. And of course, if there are any legal questions, I'm here to, to, to answer them to the best of my ability.
Again, folks, Attorney Blake is our town council. He's not counsel for DEP, he's not counsel for the state. He works for us. What he says is what we go by. I'm going to turn it over to Mary Jude Pigsley, Mark Baldi, to tell you who they are, what they represent from the state, and then we will start a presentation that Mary Jude has put together with Mark. That'll be on, I believe, both, right, that one and this one? So there'll be a slide presentation discussing what we're going to discuss tonight. Folks, it's your turn.
So if I stand up and talk, can you hear me in the back? Or should I sit and use the microphones? Okay. Thank you. So thank you very much for the invitation to be here. Mary Jude Pigsley, I'm the Regional Director of the Mass DEP Office for the Central Region. The Central Region covers 77 cities and towns from the New Hampshire border down to the borders with Connecticut, Rhode Island, from Southboro to the Brookfield. So we have a nice big chunk of the middle of the state, and we are, we are unfortunately PFAS central, not just the Central Region. We have the most public water systems that are contaminated with PFAS in the state, and I think we have the most cleanup sites related to PFAS contamination. So Mark and his team have been leading the way. Mark Baldi is the Deputy Regional Director for our Bureau of Waste Site Cleanup. The Bureau of Waste Site Cleanup is what it sounds like. It's the cleanup, the oversight of cleanup of contaminated sites. So I've actually been to Dudley twice to talk about PFAS, once in 2021, when we were talking about the public water system having PFAS contamination. And then in April of 2022, when we were talking about PFAS contamination coming from the landfill in the neighborhood at Gentex that was migrating to the Eagle Drive neighborhood. So I've been asked to cover a lot tonight, so we have a lot of slides. We're going to try to not whip through them, but there is a lot to cover, and I know we want to get to questions from the Board and questions from you all. And I will try not to talk too fast, or we'll try not to use too many acronyms. But it's sort of a shallow dive across a lot of things, and we can take questions if there are deeper dive questions that you want. So we're going to cover, first of all, what are PFAS? How are they regulated at the state and federal levels? How does DEP regulate PFAS in drinking water at your public water system? And how do we regulate contamination of private wells with PFAS? We're going to give a pretty quick summary. Mark, Mark and I are going to go back and forth. Mark's going to give a pretty quick summary of the different places in town where PFAS contamination in private wells has been discovered. And then we're going to give a little more detail about the most recent detection of PFAS in a private well, which is around the Soil Reclamation Project at, at Fish Road.
So Mary, before you start, I was remiss, also, folks, I said a joint meeting, three members of the Board. The three-member Board of Health are in the front row also. I just want to recognize them for participating tonight. So everybody is represented. Thank you.
Sure. So what are PFAS? And you can, you can see, you've probably seen in the press, the forever chemicals, they're called forever chemicals for a reason. They do not break down. They are made up of chains of carbon and fluorine atoms, and that bond, that chemical bond is one of the hardest to break in nature. They are man-made chemicals, but that, that combination is virtually impossible to break down except at incineration at very high levels. So they're very stable. They stay in the water, they stay in the soil, they stay in your body. And they, some of them are very toxic. There are sometimes I could see 4,000, some 10,000, but there's thousands and thousands of these PFAS chemicals. And we say PFAS, it's peripolyfluoroalkyl substances, but we don't want to say that all the time. So that's one acronym that we will use, is PFAS. The longer that chain is, the more toxic. So the PFAS compounds that are being regulated right now are the longer chains. But there's a lot of science that's still developing to study more of the PFAS compounds. PFAS is in everything, and PFAS is in everybody. There are statistics that show that 99% of the people in the entire world have PFAS in their blood. Everyday products, anything, I can't use trade names, but things that are stain-resistant, Scottgard, things that are water-resistant, paper coatings, the inside of Chick-fil-A, wrappers, microwave popcorn, anything that's grease-resistant, your floor wax, your car wax, your ski wax, your super sticky, super slippery dental floss has PFAS, any kind of hairspray, mascara, down that are supposedly waterproof, lots and lots of manufacturing processes. And then the one that's in the news the most is what we call AFF, which is aqueous film-forming foam. And it's a specialized firefighting foam that is for petroleum fires where oil moves quickly. This foam gets on top and moves with the gasoline or diesel or jet fuel and stifles it. So a lot of military bases and just a lot of places where fires have been put out use the, the AFF, and then there's been resulting contamination. So the health effects of PFAS, if you can't see in the back, there are documented effects on the immune system, including a decreased response to vaccines, developmental delays, endocrine disruption, which affects pregnant women, liver effects, and increased cancer risks, kidney and testes cancer, and then liver and pancreatic cancer, but there's animal data only. There's a lot more information on our website and on the Massachusetts Department of Public Health's website about the health effects. I'm going to say this a couple of times, if you have information, go to our website. Just Google "Mass DEP PFAS," and you'll find a lot of stuff. You can go down a rabbit hole about PFAS on the internet, and if you have time, then okay. But if you want reliable information and you want to be able to easily find it, DEP PFAS So this is really, really important. Where's your water come from? When you turn on the tap, where's the water coming from? A public water supply well, which Mass DEP regulates, public water supply well, serves more than 25 people more than 60 days per year, and that can be privately owned. It can be a condominium, it could be an office building. That's a public water supply. If it serves 25 people, you're subject to our regulations. Private well is a well that serves fewer than 25 people, or 25- Private well is a well that serves fewer than 25 people, or 25 people but not 60 days a year. We don't regulate that. We don't regulate private wells. My understanding is the town does not have a bylaw that regulates private wells. So if you're a private well owner, you are your own water supplier. You are responsible for the safety of your drinking water. You should sample it every year for bacteria and other things. Who knows how close your leach field is to your well? Kind of don't want to know. But there are guidelines on Mass DEP's website that talk about what private well owners should do to make sure you're drinking safe and healthy water. So with that in mind, we're going to talk about two places where PFAS comes into play. We've been regulating PFAS in public water supplies since 2020. We were one of the first states to have regulations that set limits for PFAS in drinking water. The drinking water standard is 20 parts per trillion, which is a little teeny tiny bit, a trillion. I'll tell you something that I saw in a conference about PFAS, and people will compare a trillion to a drop of water in however many Olympic-sized swimming pools, 20, I think, a lot of Olympic-sized swimming pools. And this woman in the audience said, "I don't care if there's a drop, because I don't want a drop of anything. I don't want you to pee in my pool." So people don't, you know, a trillion is a lot, but these are very toxic chemicals, so they're regulated at a very, very small level. There's also a standard for cleaning up contaminated wells. This is not a standard that applies to a drinking water well the way we regulate the public water suppliers. If a public water system, like the town of Dudley, exceeds the standard, they have to put on treatment. We will make them put on treatment. Dudley's been way ahead of the ball. I mean, there's no reluctance to do that in this town. But we can make them do that. But we don't regulate a private well owner. What we do regulate is people who contaminate private wells. So we'll talk about that. Mark's going to go into a lot of detail about their standard, about the way that we implement that. But the standard for drinking water wells is the same as the public water supply well, because it's a risk-based standard. So whereas it doesn't matter where the water's coming from, it's still the same standard of 20 parts per trillion for six of the PFAS chemicals combined. And the standard of 20 applies where the groundwater is or could be used as drinking water. So it's being used as a private well or a public water supply, or it could be used in the future as a drinking water supply. So just to refresh you super quickly, in 2020, the town's water was found to have PFAS in it. We required people to start sampling, and the town did. I put that up there. That's the information from 2020. If you want to see all your public water supply data, it's available on a website. It's not the DEP website, it's the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, EEOA Data Portal. So if you just go in and say EEA Data Portal, you can type in Dudley, you can see all the lead and arsenic and everything that's being sampled for in your public water system. And Dudley, as I said, the water superintendent did a great job on the fly to do that interconnection that you have between the wells, to blend the water, to make sure it was meeting the standard. The town's been really aggressive about pursuing money. I was saying to Mr. Ruda, we have put the town of Dudley in for a $600,000 grant, not a loan, free cash money, to deal with the proposed waterline extension to Eagle Drive, and it has to go through EPA to just get a rubber stamp. And I called today to say, can I please bring $600,000 with me? And I said that it wasn't ready yet, but I'm very, very hopeful that that's coming. So four years after Massachusetts and 15 other states were regulating PFAS, the other 34 states, no regulations, DEP this spring announced federal standards. These are national standards that go into effect in 2029. It's take five years to become effective. But they don't do it the way we're doing. It's not a total number for six combined. The two on the top, the PFOA and the PFAS, are the two most common runs, they're the most regulated, they're most studied. The standard in a public water supply, again, this is just the municipal supplies, four parts per trillion for PFOA, four parts per trillion for PFAS, and then two are going to be regulated at 10, and then there's math involved in the other ones, which Mark can explain if you're interested. But unfortunately, their six don't match our six. So when we adopted our regulation in 2020, we gave ourselves a task of, after three years, to go back and revisit that standard, and we are in the midst of doing that now. And it's not clear whether we're going to regulate our six plus some of theirs or more. We can be more strict than EPA, and if I had to guess, I would say that we are going to be more strict than EPA. We will probably be regulating at least one more. The good thing about Massachusetts already having these regulations in place is that the federal money to pay for these projects comes through DEP, through the State Revolving Fund, where you've gotten a loan already. There are 34 other states that haven't been getting money yet. So in the Commonwealth, we've been fortunate, in a weird sense, though, that we've found the problem, and we're already getting a lot, a lot, 600 and some million dollars, I think, last year, we were able to give to water systems specifically to fight PFAS. So it'd be a lot less money to go around. So what we do regulate in private wells is the contamination in a private well. The contamination under our Chapter 21E law, the Wayside Cleanup Law, defines a site as anywhere where contamination has come to be located. So if there's a spill on a site, or there's an old dry cleaner, the site is not bound by that. The contamination has no respect for property lines. The contamination goes off-site, then that parcel is also part of the site with a capital S. The owners, the operators, anybody who brought material or arranged for material to be brought to a site are liable without regard to fault, and they are jointly and severally liable, which means one person can be responsible for the whole thing, if Mass DEP chooses to have one person do the cleanup. Those people have to clean up a site, to magic words, a condition of no significant risk. And that's a standard that's written into our regulations. It has very specific meaning. There are all kinds of considerations that go into that. And it's a semi-privatized program. Mass DEP doesn't do, could not do, the thousands of cleanups that happen every year. So we have a program that has licensed site professionals, LSPs, if we lapse into jargon, that's what LSP is. But these licensed site professionals are licensed by DEP, by the state, to understand the regulations. They have training in geology, hydrogeology, earth sciences, chemistry. They are trained in our regulations, and they are responsible for designing a cleanup, figuring out how to do the assessment, find out where it is, find out how to take care of it, help the property owner or operator implement that remedy, and say, based on risk assessment, that it's a condition of no significant risk. So I'm going to stop dabbling, and Mark's going to talk about how that whole system works with the LSPs. You can just tell me if you want to do it.
I'll be using to advance here.
That one.
Thank you, Mary Jude. As Mary Jude said, my name's Mark Baldi. I'm the Deputy Regional Director for the Bureau of Wayside Cleanup. Our bureau makes sure that cleanups are done properly, cleanups that are done by licensed site professionals. Mary Jude already pretty much covered this slide. The licensed site professionals are the ones that actually do the assessment and the cleanup. They are environmental scientists or engineers that have a degree in a related field. They have a certain number of years of experience in the field making decisions. They've taken a test by the Board of Registration of Hazardous Wayside Cleanup Professionals, the LSP Board, and that board also can discipline them. But the LSPs also have to take continuing courses, and right now, they're taking a lot of classes on PFAS. The Massachusetts Continuity Plan, that's 310 CMR 40.0000, it is, those are the cleanup regulations for Massachusetts. Most sites clean up and reach a permanent solution within a year. Many spills aren't very big. The Massachusetts Continuity Plan covers anything from a 10-gallon spill to a large, complex site that may have spread widely and take a long time to assess and clean up. The regulations allow for six years to, from the time of notification, to reaching a permanent solution or a temporary solution, or what's also called remedy operation status, where there's an ongoing, long-term cleanup. The cleanup is done in phases. Once the department is notified of a release, and there are certain triggers to do that, they then have to classify the site based on what they know within the first year. Then they have three years to conduct a comprehensive site assessment that looks at finding out all the potential sources for that contamination, identifying where it is, how far it's gone, what the contamination constituents are, and the risk posed by that contamination. After that, there is a Phase 3 and a Phase 4, where the LSP determines what kind of technology is feasible to clean the site up with, now that they know how much there is and what the risk is. And then the Phase 4 is how they're actually going to implement that technology for that particular site. And then they have two more years to either reach that permanent solution, temporary solution, or remedy operation status. There are immediate response actions. Those are generally at the outset of the process, where certain conditions require immediate action, quick action, things like road spills, vapors in a building or a home, a home heating oil spill in somebody's basement. Those require immediate attention, obviously. And private well contamination also triggers an immediate response action. So when there is any visual detection found in a private well that's associated with a site, that triggers an immediate response action. That means the LSP has to take some action to eliminate, prevent, or mitigate that contamination from exposure to people in the private well. In most cases, that entails either providing bottled water or treatment for a house. So currently, there are four PFAS sites that have private well contamination in Dudley that we've been tracking. They all have immediate response actions going on to address private well contamination, providing bottled water and/or treatment. The first is the Indian Road landfill, the town's landfill. That was initially brought to our attention through our Solid Waste Division that required PFAS sampling for the monitoring wells around the landfill, at which time, seeing the PFAS in the monitoring wells around the landfill prompted us to look to see how close there were any private wells. There were some wells just outside of 500 feet, and that is a trigger to conduct an IRA, an immediate response action. The town decided that they, even though those wells were a little further than the 500 feet, they would go ahead and sample those wells, the private wells on Eagle Drive. And at that point, as they started finding PFAS in the private wells on Eagle Drive, our protocol is, for every well that has a detection, you go 500 feet and test all the wells within that 500-foot radius. Any wells that have a detection below the drinking water standard are provided bottled water. Those that are above the drinking water standard of 20 pots per trillion of PFAS 6 are provided a treatment system. Shortly after the town started assessing the private well contamination in Eagle Drive, we were also looking at Gentex, asking them information about their business there, what kind of materials they were using, and prompted them also to test surface water and groundwater. And again, they found PFAS on their property within 500 feet of the private wells, so they too were designated as a disposal site. You'll see here, we talked about release tracking numbers, those two-dash numbers. Those are, every site is assigned a disposal site number or a release tracking number. And later on, Mary Jude will show you how you can actually look those up and find out all the records for that disposal site. All the reports are there, all the letters and correspondence between us and the owners and operators of the disposal sites. It's all right there online. Anybody can see it. So apparently, the town and Gentex are conducting those IRA activities for that area of Eagle Drive. To date, they've sampled 58 drinking water wells, and 54 have detected concentrations of PFAS and/or 1-4 dioxide, which is another landfill contaminant. There's also Webco Chemical Corporation at 420 West Main Street. They came to our attention through the Public Water Supply Drinking Testing Program, because they have a public water supply, they serve over 25 people. They were required to test, they found PFAS. We gave them a release tracking number and asked them also to start sampling homes and within 500 feet and going out from there. Mace polymers and additives at 38 Roberts Road. I'm sure you're all aware that Mace had burned down in a fire. It was a major fire. There was a lot of water that was added to that fire, and in the course of collecting that water and that runoff, we had them test for PFAS based on the nature of their business of, you know, producing these polymers and additives which could contain PFAS. They found it. And again, we asked them to sample private wells within 500 feet of the Mace Polymer So to date, both of those sites are conducting immediate response action, and Webco's tested 39 wells with 34 detections, and Mace has tested 16 wells with eight detections. And those IRAs are ongoing as well. This shows the locations of the three, four sites, because the landfill and Gentex, they would be at the site on the right there. They're together. And these maps, we have some blowups that show them in more detail. We call these the green-yellow-red maps. Green means no detection, yellow means a detection less than the drinking water standard, and red is above the drinking water standard. The pink color is above 90 pots per trillion, what we consider a more significant short-term risk. The one in the middle there is, that's Mace, I'm sorry, that's Webco, and the one on the left is Mace. As you can see, they're all spread out through the southern part of the town and geographically disparate, not at all on top of each other. This is the Eagle Drive map, showing the landfill down to the southwest there, Gentex just to the north of the landfill, and the neighborhood that they've been sampling and providing bottled water and treatment to. This is Webco. Again, they've been sampling throughout the neighborhood and providing treatment and bottled water as well. And here is Mace.
Okay. So the most recent detection was found at the Soil Reclamation Project that's going on at Fish Road. So we're going to give a little more, Mark is going to give a little more detail about that. But first, I want to talk about something else we don't regulate, which is dirt. There's dirt moving around the Commonwealth in big trucks. There's dirt moving around the Commonwealth in big trucks every day, and we don't regulate dirt. We regulate contaminated dirt, but there's no definition of what's contaminated. There are definitions of how much contamination makes you a 21E site, but if you look at just soil, there are minerals in it, there are things that are technically metals. I mean, there's nothing that's pristine dirt. So how much is too much makes a difference. We have a policy that allows contaminated dirt that's not dirty dirt to go to landfills and to be put on as daily cover or as the layer underneath the cap to grade it and shape it, make sure it's constructed. For soil that's even less contaminated than that, we have a policy, and we refer to that as COM15, and COM just stands for that it came from the Commissioner's office, it didn't come from the Bureau of Waste and Clean Up or the Bureau of Water. This is a department-wide policy issued by the Commissioner. We adopted this policy because the legislature was faced, back in 2014, faced with some disturbing things happening in abandoned quarries and gravel pits, and kids would be swimming in them. There were some terrible accidents, I don't know if people remember, but the legislature took on that question of what do you do with these sites that are public hazards? And they told DEP, well, why don't you look at this, DEP, and look at these quarries and sand and gravel pits, and figure out if there's a way to put soil in those and figure out what to do with that. So that's what we did, and we came up with this policy that we call reclamation projects for quarries and sand pits and gravel pits that can take soils, but there aren't any regulations. So this is a policy that allows people to come into DEP and to be regulated voluntarily. I'll talk about the way we do that. So we have things called administrative consent orders, and it's what it sounds like. It's an order, but it's with consent. A lot of times, it's part of an enforcement proceeding where we found somebody, they violated something, they agree to get back into compliance, they agree to pay a penalty, we don't have to go through a long, drawn-out appeal, they sign a consent order with us. These are not those. These are consent orders that don't have a violation or don't have a penalty, but the party agrees to do something. And that policy sets out the way that that has to happen, what kind of safeguards there have to be to make sure that you don't create a 21E release when you take on one of these projects. And those get built into these consent orders, and I meant to bring one with me and I forgot, but they're like this fat. I mean, they have these fill management plans that go through all the details of how they're going to manage the soil and when they have to notify us, and they're extremely comprehensive documents that Mark and his staff work on. So the policy applies to quarries and sand and gravel pits that are big projects, more than 100,000 cubic yards of soil being brought in. They can't be 21E soils. They can't be soils that are generated at 21E sites that come under the definition of remediation waste, and they have to meet all other requirements. They have to meet all federal, state, and local requirements, they have to get local permits. If you need like a fill permit, you can't create dust being dragged out from the site, you can't have stormwater violations, and all the other applicable laws are wrapped into these consent orders. So they have to come to us, they have to say, I would like my project to be covered by a consent order. And we have all of our consent orders with the fill management plans available on our website, so there are no secrets what we require from people. As time has gone on, and we started doing these back in 2016, I think, and the policy was 2015, we've had experiences that caused us to sharpen up those orders a little bit, and we are now at the place where we are requiring people who come in with these projects to sample for PFAS, because that was not something that we even knew about in 2016. Part of the policy also says that we have to have some written documentation from the locals, that it could be the Board of Health, it could be the Board of Selectmen, it could be zoning, but if there's some sort of local approval process and they have their permit, or the town writes to us and says, we have no objection to the project, then the project can go forward. If the town says no, the project doesn't happen. So we have those as part of the consent order also attached to that. So this is what happened so far under the consent order for Fish Road.
So for Fish Road, we're going to talk a little bit about the specifics here, but in October of 2018, the proponent, the operator for the proposed soil reclamation facility, met with the Board of Selectmen, and I believe they also met with the Board of Health, but in both cases, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health provided a written letter that supported the reclamation project and provided an amendment to their earth removal At that time, the proponent then came to us and said, we'd like to enter into a consent But meanwhile, they started bringing in soil in 2018 at risk. They did not have the consent order, but they were following all the same procedures that were being followed at other soil reclamation facilities, including the Ramco facility here in Dudley. So they went forward and they started the process, but they were being very conservative about it, following the same rules that they would if they did have the consent order. It took a little while, there was back and forth, because as Mary Jude said, these fill management plans are very comprehensive, there are storm management plans in there, there's wetland delineation, there's all sorts of, there's dust control, traffic considerations. Then, of course, the sampling that has to go on, explaining that, and what the acceptance criteria is for the soils coming in. As Mary Jude said, these are not soils coming in from disposal sites, they're soils that are below our reporting thresholds, so in practice, they're considered clean. So it was November 2020 that we finally did execute the consent order, and this was known as Phase One, because they had intentions of expanding the property, they just weren't sure exactly where, at that point, where it would go. So we executed the consent order for Phase One at that time in November 2020. And then in August of 2022, again, they had gone through the same process of looking at expanding and working with us to develop a fill management plan and the consent order for Phase Two, and that was executed in August of 2022. Phase One was designed as six acres, that was supposed to be accepting 550,000 tons of soil. Phase One was defined as 11 acres, and a different portion of this property that has 184 acres, I believe, and their plan to accept 725,000 tons of soil. The acceptance criteria for the soil, these are soils that are coming from properties, again, that are not disposal sites, they still require an LSP to pre-characterize the soil, provide those analyses to the operator of the soil reclamation site facility and their LSP. Their LSP goes through it, makes sure that all the soil acceptance criteria are being met, that the laboratory data is good, solid data that passes quality control, and then they tell the operator that, yes, this is acceptable soil to come into the facility. I say generally less than reportable concentrations here, only because for Fish Road, there is naturally occurring arsenic up to 380 pots per million. There is arsenic throughout central Massachusetts, and that's not really all that unusual. So in the case of Fish Road, we have an acceptance criteria of 100 pots per million arsenic there, which is below their naturally occurring background level. For all of these, for these soil reclamation facilities, they all require groundwater monitoring annually, and we have different triggers if, for example, soil comes in that does not meet the acceptance criteria, then there are triggers that would require additional groundwater monitoring. In the case of Fish Road, Phase One was actually completed in June 2022 with approximately 345,000 tons of soil, and Phase Two so far has taken in about 82,500 tons of soil. So as part of the Phase Two consent order, we required PFAS sampling of the groundwater. And even before they actually had the consent order in place, we asked for baseline sampling. And at that time, in June of 2022, they sampled the monitoring wells and found PFAS on the property at less than reportable concentrations. After we had executed the consent order with them, they conducted sampling in November of 2022, and at that time, they found PFAS at 28.8 pots per trillion, which exceeded the notification criteria. And then they ended up notifying in May of 2023. They had done, they did some additional testing in the interim and confirmed those results. So after they had found the notifiable condition and notified, we gave them a release tracking They started their Phase One initial site investigation, which they have a year to do, and they submitted that this past May, and they had done additional rounds of sampling of groundwater. Between the time of their Phase One submittal in July of 2024, they installed some additional monitoring wells within 500 feet of the nearest private wells on South Bridge Road. At that time, they found 90.1 pots per trillion PFAS-6 in the groundwater within 500 feet of the private well, back of its own new RTN, because that's a new notifiable condition requiring an IRA. So in response to that detection of PFAS exceeding the reportable concentration within 500 feet of a private well, we then required them to sample the private well that was closest and any other wells within 500 feet. And they have sampled the well on South Bridge Road, did find some PFAS there, and they will be expanding their sampling out 500 feet, as we've asked other sites to do, and providing bottled water and treatment for those.
So we've been talking about these release tracking numbers, and I just wanted to show you why you might be interested in those. If you go onto that Energy and Wildlife Affairs data portal, and you click on waste sites or look up a site, you go to this field, and the only thing, you don't have to fill in all those boxes if you have the release tracking number, it's way easier. So we wanted to make sure people have the release tracking numbers. The one up there is the latest one, the one for the private well contamination on South Bridge Road, it's 50507, but you have to put the leading zeros in. So if you put that in that field and you click on it, it takes you to the documentation for the site, and then you just click on the supporting documentation. And I don't have the next screen because my computer was acting up this afternoon, but the next screen will show you, it's a table, it has a list of all the documents, and next to it is a link. And you can click on all those live links, and it will take you exactly, if you want to see the fill management plan and the consent order, you click on that document, it'll take you to all 250 pages of that document, if you want to see the groundwater monitoring results. It's all available, it's all uploaded by the licensed site professionals, pretty much in real time. I mean, it goes up through a portal, it doesn't come to us and get uploaded, it's uploaded by the licensed site professionals. So all of that, you have all the RTNs in these slides. So if you wanted to look up any of them, you will be able to do that and get the documents. So as I said, MassDEP PFAS, that's where you can get any information about what DEP does, recommendations if you're a private well owner, for things that we think you should be doing to take care of your own health if you're a private well owner, the background science documents that went into getting the standards for the PFAS-6 set, there are links to links within those that take you deep into documents for the National Science, NSS, NSI. All of the public health and risk assessment information math is available through clicking through things. So if there's something on there that you don't find, you can certainly contact me, because we will make sure, we want to make sure people can get information, and we'll try to put up links to other things on our website if that would be helpful. So, Mr. Chair, thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to come and talk about all this. I know it's a lot, and it's a lot to digest, but if there are questions, we're happy to take them.
Before we do questions, Mr. Ruda, can we have that presentation linked to social media?
Yeah, we'll ask him and then we'll put it up tomorrow.
So if you folks didn't have a chance to jot down the actual numbers that she was referring to, we're going to put it on social media, but as she stated, you can Google it, and I'm sure with a little bit of clicking, you can find what you need. So before I open up to the public, anybody from the select board have any questions, concerns, or comments? Mr. Singanovich?
Not yet, but thank you.
Ms. DeShane?
I do actually have a question, it's probably a little in the weeds, but looking at the consent orders that were discussed for, like, the most recent, for Fish Road, there was a breakdown of tons of soil to a certain amount of acreage. How is that determined? Is that by the applicant, is that by DEP? So like, the breakdown ends up being, like, in Phase One, there was more, there were more tons of soil, like, moved into a smaller area than in the second phase, so I'm just curious.
So can I give the non-technical answer, and then Mark can correct me if I'm wrong? But there's a difference between cubic yards and tons. Is this the answer?
There is.
Close enough? So one is measuring area, and one is measuring weight?
Okay.
So they measure it by weight, because they get paid by the ton? But when it comes in and it takes up space, that's how you see how much space? Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it does.
So I would say, to answer your question, it's really up to the property owner?
Okay.
And there are space requirements and other limiting factors. If there is, you know, endangered species or threatened habitat on the property. One of the things we do look at is if they're building a big mound of soil, the slope shouldn't be more than three to one. So that kind of, based on the footprint, that limits how much can come in.
So it's literally, like, kind of, just in layman terms, the difference has a lot to do with the topography of where it's getting?
Right.
Like, what those acreage, like, what the acreage is?
Right.
And that, okay, perfect.
And the idea is that it should, the whole point of the policy is to reclaim, to fill in quarries and old sand and gravel pits.
But, I, oh, Seth?
Yeah?
So I think, I was going to ask a similar question. I think what Jana was hitting on was, the original site was 550,000 tons?
Right.
Over seven acres, six acres?
Six acres.
So they actually took in approximately two-thirds of the requested or allowed amount?
Right.
So I think the question was, and I think you answered it, that even though it's less of the allowed amount, was it not spread out over that entire six acres? Was it more concentrated? But I think you described why it may be that way.
And frankly, the operator and the owner of the property, you know, made a decision that they were satisfied with how much they had brought into that parcel and closed it out. But yeah, it really is determined by the acreage of the area that they're going to fill.
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question.
Mr. Turnaby.
Thank you, and thank you for coming, that was very educational. My question for you is, what is the town's role? Um, my question for you is, what is the town's role in the response action? Is there any role, or is that a DEP? You guys occupy the field on that.
Yeah, that's, it's a state regulation, and, um, there's nothing like this that I'm aware of that this town or any town has. You can't have a local bylaw that would conflict with the state law. So Mass DEP's 21E regulations are the regulations that deal with contaminated soil. The only other thing that would deal with contaminated soil would be federal superfund statute. I mean, that's, you can, you can regulate up, but you can't regulate down. So, I mean, you can regulate down, but you can't regulate up. So, um, there's no, there's nothing local that can conflict with what we're doing under 21E.
Thank you. So to piggyback on Attorney Blake, a lot of the attention has been focused on two specific sites in town. We actually have four that you folks are monitoring or?
Correct.
In a certain step of the process. Each one may be a different step, but there are other areas in town, like Webco has all of a sudden become like a small hotspot of information or misinformation. So people understand you folks are aware of it, and they are in the process with you folks as a regulatory authority, same as Mace's. I think the chief made a presentation after the fire about, uh, potential release of chemicals up there and what was done. So those, you, you folks have been right on top of that. So before somebody comes in next week and says, you know, "Oh, my God, I live by Mace's." You guys are well aware of it, and they can easily, again, find the information.
Right. So although, as we explained, the license type professionals make the determination on assessment and cleanup, there are a few key areas of the, the Massachusetts contingency plan where the department has approval, um, authority. And, and that includes immediate response actions, such as the sampling of the private wells and requiring treatment and bottled water. The, um, every six months, um, the owner of the, of the property submits a, a status report on that IRA, and we have staff that are assigned to reviewing it. And if there are any, any issues that crop up, they, they reach out to the, uh, the license type professional, and we try to resolve it.
Because it did come up too in the past, um, somebody made mention at a local candidate tonight about Gentex. They are also under the same IRA-type action that the town is.
All, all these types of?
That was, that was a specific one because we're talking about a water line maybe. So it's, it's a joint determination by you folks that there's two parties that are responsible up there right now, as it stands.
Right. There are two different release tracking numbers because they came in separately. The landfill came in first, and then Gentex came in second. But they, back to the concept of joint liability, both are responsible for the whole thing, if that makes sense. So right now, I understand the parties are working together and sharing some of the work, which is great. But we could always say, "Town of Dudley, you clean all of it up." Or we could say, "Gentex, you clean all of it up." We don't like to do that. We like to let the potentially responsible parties, what they're called, we like to let them figure it out because that makes the site get cleaned up faster and people cooperate. So we're glad that, um, that there are two responsible parties and that the immediate response action has been going along, and, and you saw the map that Mark put out there. There's been a tremendous amount of work done so far.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson? Anybody from the Board of Health like to speak? Monica? Just, um, as we do, folks, as you come up later, I'm going to ask you to identify yourself. You don't have to say, "I live at, like, you know, One Mary Street." Just say, "I'm so-and-so, resident Dudley on February 1st."
Hi, I'm Monica Kaufman, Board of Health, 59 Baker Pond Road. Since May, we've had a document on the Board of Health website that is purportedly a way for citizens to get involved in IRA and RAM. And it's, um, from the Baker administration. So I was wondering if, you know, it was billed in the May meeting that if ten citizens got together, that they could, like, form an official group and be involved in things that were happening with the EP. So is that something that is still happening? Um, and how would ten citizens get together in order to be in the know?
So I am so sorry because we had slides on that, and I must have, I must have, I must have deleted them. Um, so yeah, we should talk about the PIP stuff.
Right.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, so yes, you're referring to the Public Involvement Plan, um, program, where ten, ten more citizens can petition, um, the property owner, the disposal site owner, the person conducting the response actions, to, to have the site designated as a Public Involvement Plan site. That's done after the site is tier classified. In the case of, uh, Fish Road, the site was, was tier classified back in May. So we received a copy of a petition on August 16th, um, that had purportedly also been sent to the, uh, the owners of Fish Road and the, the operators. At that point, they have, um, they have to acknowledge within, I believe it's 20 days, that they received the petition and, um, whether it's, it meets the requirements to be designated as a, as a PIP site. And really, there's, there's not, it's not a high bar. Uh, the fact that the site is tier classified, um, should qualify it as a, as a Public Involvement Plan site. Once the, um, the owner or, and/or operator acknowledges that it, it's a PIP site, they then, uh, plan a public meeting, they draft a, a, a public involvement plan, and then schedule a public meeting to present that plan. And the PIP plan provides, um, provides ways that the community and residents can, uh, reach out to the, the, uh, owners and operators to provide comments and, uh, questions on plans and other submittals. Um, and then the, the owner-operator has, has a timeframe, I believe it's 60 days, to respond back, and they have to provide those, those responses. Doesn't mean they have to abide by all the, the, the comments and questions, but they have to respond and provide a, a reason why they're responding as they are. So it is a, it is a, an opportunity for the, the community and the, the citizens to have a, a little more say in what's going on, or at least be better informed about the, the plans and the actions that are being taken. And at this point, as I said, we received a copy of the, the petition. I believe the, uh, the, the owners and the operators of the Fish Road facility will, will be reaching out to the petitioners.
And just to be clear, that it's, it's a process that the owner and the operator undertake. These are not DEP-led meetings. This is something that is the people doing the cleanup, getting input for them, and their license type professional to design the assessment, design the, the remedial actions, and then provide that information for public comment. Um, and as Mark said, take it into consideration and, and respond to those comments. And I, I, if, Mr. Ruda, if you don't mind holding off on the social media posting until tomorrow, I will put those slides back in if I can find them, um, so that it's more complete, and people will have the information about the Public Involvement Plan. Um, our regulations include, uh, how that works, how the PIP program works, and then there is also guidance on our website for people who want to get a, a petition together. I apologize.
So before I call on other members of the Board of Health, I'm going to defer to counsel for a moment. We spoke at our last meeting that the applicant owner of, we're spending a lot of time on one site. Obviously, it's a hot-button issue, but I'll defer to counsel. He can give a brief overview. We are in well down the road of a discussion with the applicant owner about a separate meeting, not a PIP per se, but we did tell the folks at our last meeting that we provide an update. So if you give just a general update, we are discussing about a meeting with those folks, right, a separate meeting.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. We, uh, we are just now trying to nail down the dates.
Yeah, it's looking, it's looking like October. Yeah. We have town meeting in October, so we understand people want the answers now, we do too. So it'll probably be after the town meeting, which is, Olivia, it's on the?
21st.
21st. But probably towards the end of the month in October, we will have another meeting that we've discussed with the applicant owner of Fish Road, which is getting a lot of attention right now. Anybody else from Board of Health have anything like to add? Madam Chairwoman? Is that all set? Water sewer? I know it's kind of outside you guys, you have your station up and running.
Yeah, it is. Scott Zakowski, current chair. I just wanted to reiterate, make sure, when you're getting information, there's information out there all over the place. Make sure you're getting it from the right place. Uh, the DEP website is, is a classic. Get it from, um, actually from these slides and/or from, um, the selectman's office or the water sewer office or the Board of Health's office. Don't, don't get your information off of social media. It's, it's another, it's somebody's opinion. And, um, get, get your information from the right source, from a reliable source. That's, that's it.
And I would say, if anybody has any questions and wants to reach out to me, that, feel free. We're, we're always there. We take, uh, phone calls, we take emails. However you want to communicate, we'll, we'd be happy to answer your questions.
George, as Water Superintendent, you all set? So at this point, unless another town official, that's, you don't see, I apologize, wants to speak, now's your chance. I don't see anybody. So at this time, again, we're going to open it up to the public. Identify yourself, general location, keep it respectful, please. I don't want to have to stop the meeting so we can come up in an orderly fashion. Sir, are you on the left? I don't know your name, I'm sorry, otherwise I, oh, Mr. Chinaki, I'm sorry.
Oh, Mr. Gregory Fainatsky.
Three minutes?
I am, three minutes, give me six, please.
Well, be three, and if, if we have time later, you can have another.
No, I am, you know, I was sitting like in church, you're talking, talking. I am straight guy. I, I, I just got straight answers. I got first question, why you choose DEP, choose Dudley as dump site in Massachusetts?
I'm sorry, why did DEP choose?
Dudley. Town of Dudley to dump those poison to Dudley. Why you choose Dudley, not in other towns?
What did we choose Dudley for?
Why, why you choose?
Choose Dudley for what?
For dumping, that, that, that very poison what you bring it to Dudley.
DEP did not choose the town.
Somebody did.
But not DEP.
I saw, I saw some letter, you said, that is highly toxic, toxic, but it's up to norms. That's, that's scent what you sending. If this, if you agree with that, why you took from the casino and harbor or beaches and sent here? If was not up to norm, why you remove it, bring to Dudley?
DEP did not do anything, sir.
No, somebody did. I saw the letter from you, the guys. It's, it's going to be lawyers involved, I know for sure. I saw the letter. You said highly toxic, but up today, up to norms. What kind of norms?
So if you would like to send this letter to me, that's?
Yeah, I'm going to have a copy of that letter. Yeah, I got.
Then why don't you do that? I can provide my address. Can you let me?
Yeah, but.
Can I, can I speak, please?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. I can provide, Mr. Ruda, with my contact information. Actually, you have my email address. If you would like to send me this correspondence, which does not exist?
Yes, I, I saw it.
Send you this information. Mass DEP did not move any soil anywhere.
I have only three minutes, that's, I'm going to go short. I built those houses on Eagle Drive, right? All of them. I worked 45 years down there, and now you telling this all polluted? What's going to happen next? People cannot sell the houses? You have to destroy it? All the while meeting, the select, the selectmen said to me, "We're going to put cement in the walls." Would you treat people in Dudley this way?
I'm going to defer that question.
Yeah, but I can't hear a word.
Yeah. People in the back, please. People, everybody, we can't, we can't hear when you're talking. Thank you. I'm going to defer to counsel. I don't think the town of Dudley is supervising destruction of homes. I'm not sure where that's leading. If there's a question, Mr. Chinaki, I'm going to have to ask you to answer because your time is just about done.
No, it's, it's, it's not, it's not so important. By why they choose, I see trucks from Maine, Rhode Island, New Hampshire. Dudley is dump site now? You got two, three dump site? On Fish Road, I went one day down there, they cut probably hundreds and hundreds of trees there. It's next to the brook, and they bring eight hundred thousand, fifty thousand of, of tons of, of poison to Dudley? You know how many trucks going to be? I calculated. Forty-five thousand trucks. I also saw Oxford open that space. How many tons were you guys dumping? Was no public hearing, nobody knew. Nobody asked to come, people come Dudley, vote, we like the poison here in Dudley. It was quiet. The guy dump bring eight hundred fifty tons of poison, if he got charged $10, it's eight hu, eight million five hundred thousand dollars he make on, on that one project, and he start another one. Oxford dump is 300 feet from French River. What you guys doing? DEP is very strict on that. I work on that DEP stuff, I know a little bit, I'm the builder. Why you allow it 50 feet high poison there? It's going to leak, it's leaking. They put some drainage to the French River from that stop place.
So, Mr. Chinaki, I'm going to defer to counsel again for a moment, but your time is up. Um, I don't think it's fair to accuse DEP of?
No, I, somebody going, I, I'm going to read some, I got some letter.
No, Mr. Chinaki, your, your time is up. You can come back up after.
No, 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 I got three minutes.
I'm going to have, I'm going to have three minutes. He timed you. I'm going to have to ask you to step back and let somebody else come up. If there's time at the end, you can come back up.
I come back.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
One second, Mr. Lyons.
As the, as the representatives from DEP outlined, um, DEP isn't responsible for bringing in any of this soil. And, um, I think that the, the gentleman should, should look at the presentation on the town's website to get a full understanding of what DEP's role is in, in regulating this.
Correct. And, you know, before we bring up Mr. Lyons, Mr. Baldi also mentioned the acceptable standard for arsenic, for example, was 380.
It, it's been found as naturally occurring at that property, up to 380, but the acceptance criteria was set at 100.
Which is less than a third of what was naturally occurring.
Right.
For arsenic.
For arsenic only.
Mr. Lyons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul Lyons, Fish Road, um, to the Mass DEP. First, I'd like to ask, you said that the, uh, the dumping on Fish Road started, uh, two, October, November 2018, is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, who specifically has to apply for that dumping? Is it the owner of the property? Or is it anybody who wants to dump there can fill out a request from the town or from Mass DEP?
It, it requires the owner to, um, be involved and, and usually it's the owner and, in this case, a, a company that operates it, you know, as far as bringing in the, the soil and, and trucks. So in, in the case of Fish Road, uh, the owner and operator are on the consent order together. But in order to bring soil into somebody's property, you have to have access legally. So the owner is always going to be involved.
And do you have the ACO with you?
Um, I don't have it with me here, but it's.
But if I email you for a request to the owner's name at that time?
Sure.
Uh, you could tell me who was on the phone, form with that?
Definitely.
Okay. Uh, because some questions come up with that. Uh, very quickly, there's an article in the Telegram Gazette, uh, that when the Oxford Ave property opened for dumping, uh, the investigative reporter found that 727 trucks out of 1,631 were well over the, uh, the requirement for the state. And I don't want to read the whole quote, but she said, "Had, had those trucks been stopped by the state police on any Massachusetts road, they would have been sighted." And, uh, I, I'm not accusing the owners or former owners of the property. These are the trucking companies that are bringing in, that are violating the law. And I think people have to question, if they're violating, violating law just on the weight of what they're bringing in, that, how do you know that they're being 100% honest when they say what is coming into these landfills? Uh, getting back to Fish Road, please, real quick, you want to use my time. You talked about the owners doing testing. Well, all the abutters to this testing. Well, all the abutters to this property, are you saying it's up to them to spend their money to test their private wells for PFAS or anything else? Or will the owners agree to do the testing, or will Mass DEP come in and do testing of homeowners' wells that may be contaminated, since you've already found at least one well that's contaminated?
So the way it works is the way Mark was describing, where if there's a detection in the well, which there was at this particular home on South Bridge Road, you draw a circle 500 feet around that. And then if there's a detection there, you draw a circle 500 feet around that. And you keep on going until when we do the red, yellow, green map, you get to all green. So as long as there's a yellow, there has to be another 500-foot circle. That's the responsibility of the responsible parties. They have to do that. Our understanding is that they will be doing that on South Bridge Road. We don't go looking for it randomly. We look at where it is, and we work outward from there. So if you are someone who is not within 500 feet, if you are within 500 feet, they will contact you. They'll want access. They'll take your sample. They'll give you a copy of the lab results when they come back. That will all be given to you. If you're two miles away and you want to test your well, that's up to you. That's your water supply.
But what if you abut the property? And let's say you're more than 500, let's say you're 700 feet away, it becomes a homeowner's responsibility to pay for well testing, is what you're saying?
The assessment will go out 500 feet. And if you would like to sample before you know whether you would be in a second or third, you're free to do that. If you do that, if you sample your well for any reason and find PFAS, you should really share that information with us because it would be helpful. If you're beyond the 500 feet and you sample and you find PFAS, that becomes another data point in another 500-foot circle somewhere else. So if you're near...
Mary, whoever in the back is talking, I know you don't think it's loud, but the microphone can't pick it up. They can't pick it up at home. If you feel the need to talk to your neighbor or the person next to you, feel free to go out in the hallway, please. This is very important. I feel bad taking some of Mr. Lyons's time away. We literally cannot hear when people are talking. If you feel the need to talk, please step out. I don't want to have to have you, if I see it again, or somebody gonna have to have you removed. That's a blanket to everybody. Please keep the conversation down till you're at the podium. Thank you. Sorry, Mary.
No, that's it. I was gonna say that we would appreciate receiving any information if anyone samples their private wells.
Thank you. And what about now, wetlands on the property? We went to the, some of the abutters went to the Conservation Commission meeting last month, and they did not allow us to talk or to ask any questions at the Conservation Commission meeting. They said, submit anything you have on email and we'll get back to you. Wetlands on the property, does DEP require any kind of testing on streams, on wetlands, on ponds that are on that property where the dumping is being done of contaminated soil?
So if there were wetlands requirements associated with a project, they would have been permitted by the Conservation Commission. Under the Wetlands Protection Act, the first permitting authority is with the locals. It's the state statute, but the locals enact that. So if there were conditions imposed, that would have come from the Conservation Commission. There is no order of conditions for this site. So there was no document from the town under the Wetlands Protection Act requiring any kind of sampling. If, in Mark's program, there are times when we would require sampling of surface water, but there are no surface water quality standards for PFAS. So you can get a number, but you don't know what you're comparing it to, because nobody's drinking out of a stream. So the standard that we have is a groundwater standard. There is no standard for surface water. So there's the only information that you would gain from that would be something about the hydrology of the site, like where is surface water going. But then you have the water under the ground, which could be going in a totally different direction. So you could gather that information, but there's no regulatory standard to apply it to.
But if you had wetlands that are stationary, then they might be contaminated with PFAS?
Quickly, Lyons, I'm sorry. I took some time before. Let's ask one more.
No, definitely.
As I had mentioned earlier, the site has had the initial site investigation done. That's kind of a baseline study. They have, they will be doing a more comprehensive site assessment going forward, building on itself. And surface water is one of the media that they will have to look at and evaluate. I believe the LSP has already done some of that surface water sampling. So yes, surface waters will be sampled, as it relates to the site contamination. It's not, they're not gonna look at all of the wetlands across this 184 acres necessarily, but where they're finding contamination, where it may be impacting surface water, yes, they will have to look at that.
And did I understand correct that the present owners only, on the property, they only do one test, test well, one test site? Or is it multiple test wells that they do where they're dumping across the property?
So when they initially designed the Phase 1 portion of the reclamation facility, they had four monitoring wells. When they added Phase 2, they put in an additional force of monitoring wells. And more recently, they've added another four. So I believe there are 12 monitoring wells across the facility at this point.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Whoever wants to come up next, feel free to come up. I just want to touch on Mary Jude's presentation. I used to live on a well. I believe what she said, DEP recommends you test your own well, whether you have PFAS near you, once a year. I'd always test it when my children were little. And I think what she was trying to say was, if you live outside of the bubble, and you want to test your water to have a baseline, to compare it if something were to happen in the future. I think the DEP website recommends annual testing of private wells. Anybody, private well should be doing that anyway, in my opinion. I used to when I'm on town water. Sir?
Steve Flynn. I live on South Bridge Road. And I'm gonna go back and look at the video so I can get all the details, because I didn't catch the numbers and whatnot. But I'm interested, obviously, South Bridge Road, this site is across the street, across the river from me. I'm curious to know, and I'm sure I'll find it if I spend hours and hours online, but South Bridge Road is a long road. And I don't know, should I continue to wait and see if I'm contacted? Can I find out what part of South Bridge Road is affected right now? Does somebody have that information they can tell me? Do I need to stop drinking my water and get it tested tomorrow? Like, should I be really concerned, or should I just be like semi-concerned?
I can't speak to your level of comfort with risk, and I would not even presume to tell you what you should do.
Could you tell me what the address is?
So we can tell you it's 85?
98.
98, 98 South Bridge Road.
Oh, perfect. I meant 97. That's great.
So that's across the street?
Yeah.
Within 500 feet?
Yes.
They will be sampling your well.
Now, how long do I wait before somebody contacts me?
We just spoke with them on Friday, so I'm not sure whether they have a plan, whether they've done their circles yet. Hopefully they have. But they should be doing that outreach, and they will, it's not our form, but the different parties have different flavors of access agreements. They want to make sure that, you know, if you broke your plumbing, they don't get...
So somebody who doesn't have to drink the water on South Bridge Road gets to decide when they're gonna sample my water? Not, they're not gonna come knocking on my door and say, we found it across the street, we really should check yours?
If it's within 500 feet, they will.
They spoke with us today, sent us an email today confirming that they would be following up and doing that sampling.
Okay.
What I can say is that the level of contamination that was found at 98 South Bridge Road is four pots per trillion of PFBS. It's not one of the PFAS six compounds that we have a standard for, but it was in that suite of PFAS that the EPA is looking at.
Okay.
And our department is also looking at that for the future.
So I had tried to find on the state, I probably wasn't on the right website, but I went to mass.gov trying to find somebody to test my water. And I put a couple of calls and emails out to a few of the people that were listed, but there weren't many options. And I hadn't gotten any contacts back from anybody. But is there a better resource to find somebody? Like, if I don't, if I don't hear from somebody in the next day or two, I'm gonna start tracking this down myself? But is, do you guys have a resource of people that I can contact to test the water? And if I have to pay for it myself, I will? And then the next question is, now that I know it's that close, I guess my question was, if I test my well myself, and I find something bad in there, I could assume that it came from the site on Fish Road, but what if, you know, how do you determine that that's where it came from? Obviously, I'm close enough now where I know the answer to that question, but if somebody on the street behind me on old South Bridge Road, they're kind of like halfway between the May site and the Fish site. So how do they know who to point the finger at? You know, how does that happen? Is it just through the testing of the 500-foot circles?
So there's a lot in there.
Right.
First of all, thank you so much for asking the question about the private well sampling. We do have information on our website, Google Mass DEP PFAS. There's a link, it'll be FAQs for private well owners. We have a list of people. It's really important, like, you can't go to BJ's and buy a test kit. You can't rely on somebody knocking on your door, because there are people who, in another town, where there was significant number of contaminated wells, people were following along and knocking, oh, you know, we could sell you a treatment system. The labs that can sample, can run the tests according to a very specific method for PFAS have to be certified in that method. So you should look at the list on our website to see what labs can take that and run that sample in accordance with what we would accept. If it's not a certified lab, we're not going to accept the data. You can take the sample yourself, but PFAS are in everything. So if you have deodorant on your hands, if you using a Sharpie, there are many different ways that you could cross-contaminate a sample, because it's everywhere, and the numbers that we're measuring are so very small. So you can do it. We had a program where we had a grant that we could spend to actually sample private wells throughout the Commonwealth to try to get an idea of the distribution of PFAS in private wells. And we made a video as part of that program to show homeowners how to take their own samples. We did not do the sampling, but we paid for the analysis. So on our website, just Google Mass DEP PFAS, if you go to the private well sampling program, UMass was our contractor for that, and they have a video that you could watch that tells you how to be super careful if you're gonna take your own sample. And if you are not within, like I said, we start where it is. We don't go where, we don't know it yet. We just, you can't do it that way.
Right.
So you will be in the first bubble. If somebody, just for their own health, and everybody's standards are different, and if you want to go home and do this, then that's your decision to do. And I'm not saying that's something everyone should do, or not to bother to do it. That's your own personal decision about your drinking water. But if you're going to do that, you should make sure you do it correctly. If you get a result back, and it shows that you have PFAS at any level, and when you do the test, you get 18, I think, 18 different PFAS chemicals from running this specific method, and we only regulate six of them, as Mark was saying, the PFAS in the well on South Bridge Road is not one of the six that we regulate.
Right.
It's still a contaminant. It's still there. So that's why...
It's not that we don't regulate. Doesn't have a reportable concentration.
Doesn't have a report, thank you. So the, now you made me lose my train of thought. The way to make sure we have the information and can use it in these investigations is to send it to us. If you're far away, and it doesn't appear that you're related to anything, we will still track it. There'll be some designation in our system that's shown to us, so that we can keep track of things that homeowners tell us. And in the absence of anything, like you have a ski waxing business in your barn.
Right.
We will presume that you're down gradient of something, even though we don't know what it is right now. But if you're far enough away that we're not gonna say it's the landfill, it's Webco, whatever, you should still tell us. And we will keep that information, because it's important for us to have. It's not that, again, we don't regulate your private well, but we would like to have that information for investigating where is the contamination.
Okay. So last quick question. If I don't hear anything in the next couple of days, what's, what do I do? What's my recourse? I'm obviously gonna start hollering at people.
Let me know.
I would give them a couple of days.
Yeah.
I mean, they're gonna have to do the access agreement.
Right. Okay.
Figure that out.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next. Gentlemen in the back?
Yep. Hi, I'm Bob St. John. I live at 38 Fish Road, the last residence on Fish Road. It's more of a request that if you come to look at the pile of dirt, you cannot see it from Fish Road. My wife and her mother almost got run over by somebody coming down the road at about 35, 40 miles an hour to come see the pile of dirt. It's a very narrow road. It's a very hard visibility road, and you can't see it. If you do want to see the pile of dirt, you gotta park at the trailhead for the nicely paved, brand-new trail coming down the Coonawag River Trail. And you walk about three-quarters of a mile. Can't miss it. It's on the right. So it's more of a request that I'd like people not to come flying down the road to see something they can't see anyway.
Sir, if you see a vehicle and you have the opportunity...
Oh, I yelled at somebody the other day.
Forget a partial Platon or Platin. You can refer it to the police department, and I'm sure they will...
We've made several calls. Also, when you're walking down the trail, be careful of the four-wheelers. They tend to drive down there, too.
Once again, if there's four wheels back there, they're not supposed to. If you hear one...
They know they're not supposed to. They wave very nicely with more than one finger occasionally.
I understand. Thank you.
So I would appreciate that the townspeople just take care of driving on the road.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. I saw someone in the back. Sorry about that. Mr. Dergen.
This one's for Mary Jude. Mary Jude, you said, Dave Dergen, 68 Eagle Drive.
Thank you.
Mary Jude, you said that trash haulers would be responsible for taking notes of the sites. Did that include for the dump as well, the landfill?
I didn't say anything about trash. I'm not sure I understand the question.
You said haulers, but I'm saying trash, but you said haulers. You were talking about dirt going into these other sites.
What's your question?
My question is, would these trash haulers that were bringing dirt into the landfill back in the 80s and 90s, would they be held responsible as well?
I didn't say anything about trash. Let's just be clear.
Okay, we are clear about that.
If you want to keep saying I'm saying trash, you can, but I'm not saying trash.
I'm saying trash, not you. You said haulers.
You're asking me a question that I wasn't speaking about, Mr. Dergen.
Right. You said dirt...
So what's your question, whether the landfill is regulated?
Bringing to a reclamation site. You said dirt bringing to a reclamation site, and I'm asking you if it's the same thing for trash going to the landfill?
The landfill's closed. There should be no...
This is 1980s and 1990s we're talking about, not right now.
I'm not sure what your question is, then.
If you, no, whatever. All right. So we'll skip that one. This other thing, this petition, is it too late to get that going for the landfill in Gentex? 10 people?
Has it been tier classified?
Sites are tier classified, and it would be...
You can do that.
You can submit a petition. You send it to the responsible parties that are doing the work.
So Town of Dudley and Gentex?
Yes. Just, Mr. Dergen, both release tracking numbers should be on that.
Correct.
So it gets to the right place.
Gotcha. This question's from Mark. How long do parties have to install the Poet Systems once they go over that 20 parts per trillion?
Excuse me?
Once you find out that a house has gone over 20 parts per trillion, how long does the responsible party have to, you know...
Install a treatment system.
Yeah.
They should be doing it as soon as possible. And again, that would depend on access to the property from the property owner and whatever they may be.
whatever they may be. In some cases, there are considerations about, you know, space and things like that that make it a little more difficult for the, the plumbing and whatnot. But they should be contacting the homeowner and doing that as soon as possible.
Like seven, eight months?
No, it should be, it should be-
Lot sooner than that.
Much sooner than that.
Okay. The, the Board of Health mentioned at one, one of their meetings that if a private, if a private well owner were to test their well and they tested above 20 parts per trillion, that they would be forced by the DEP to get a Poet system? Is that correct? That's either, either one of you two, I guess?
It's not correct.
Not correct. I think that's it. Oh, well, yeah. Webco, you said 34 people are infected, 34 houses?
For Eagle Drive?
No, for the Webco site, one in the middle.
I'd have to look those numbers up, but that sounds about right, yes.
34 out of 38, I think.
Detections.
So how come they wouldn't be required to put in a water line down that road?
Mr. Dergan and I have been corresponding routinely on this issue. So there's no requirement that DEP sets, and I've written this to you multiple times and we've talked about it here. DEP is not doing these cleanups. The licensed site professional is responsible to come up with the way to get to a condition of no significant risk. There are things that are feasible to do on a site and other things are not feasible to do. On the Eagle Drive site, that's what the LSP is looking at. It's a whole different LSP, a whole different place in the system where they are. They have six years to conduct their cleanup and get to a condition of permanent solution. So I can't speak, it's apples and oranges. But DEP is not doing the cleanup, and I don't know how many ways I can tell you that.
I don't think that you are. I never said you were.
You keep asking me, when is DEP going to do a water line?
Because this is what I was told by Jonathan Ruda, that the, the DEP is forcing this water line, right, Jonathan?
So my conversation with Mary Jude through the chair was, we have to get to the best end result. The presence of a water line there is what the expectation would be because it's a stub right at the, it's a public water supply right at the beginning of Eagle Drive. So the way I understood it was, it's not just simply mitigation, it's a permanent solution. That would be the DEP expectation of a, of what Mary Jude just said, which is a clean, final result for cleanup.
And what you can look at in the regulations that I sent you the citation to today, it explains how LSPs who are licensed, trained professionals do the evaluation that's required to get to a condition of no significant risk, which looks at, among other things, how can you prevent or mitigate or eliminate the risk? And if eliminating it entirely is feasible, then that's what the LSP would recommend because they're licensed. This is what they are tasked with doing, is to evaluate all the options, and they will make the determination about whether eliminating is feasible. If you put in a water line, you eliminate the exposure. You're done. If you have Poet systems, you're mitigating the exposure. It's working now, but is it going to continue to work in the future? Is there some other contaminant? We weren't regulating PFAS until four years ago. If there's another contaminant that comes along and you're on the water line, it doesn't matter. If you have a point of entry, a Poet treatment system on your house, then there's something else that you would have to deal with. It's not a final answer. It's not a permanent answer. So our preference is eliminate. The LSP has to do the analysis and determine whether that's feasible.
All right, Mr. Dergan, that's the time. You can come back up after if we allow more questions, but there's a gentleman with a hat that wanted to come up. Just remove your cap, sir, when you get up to the microphone. Thank you.
Excuse me. Jeff Benigni, Prospect Ave, retired disabled vet. I've lived in Dudley for 12 years now. I show our hands to my fellow residents. Anybody lived here 12 years or more?
Jeff, Jeff. Up to us, please. A lot of us have been here more than 12 years.
Okay.
Thank you.
The town water department sends out letters every quarter or what have you, in the spring or maybe the fall, stating that PFAS levels are at, and I'm paraphrasing here, that whatever parts per million and says even though they're above whatever suggested rates, they don't pose a significant health risk to the residents of Dudley. Is that accurate or fairly correct?
The chairman nodding his head, yes.
An annual statement that said, oh, yes.
Okay. And that some of the issues have been said were kidney issues? Is that a correct assessment as well?
For what kind of issues?
For the PFAS, kidney issue, potential side effects of the PFAS. Is that a correct assessment?
I, I know that from being told that by the Department of Public Health, but all the information related to public health is, you should go through the Department of Public Health's website.
Okay. And the reason I ask that-
They actually, they actually have, they have people in their environmental bureau who, if you had concerns and you were speaking about your own public, your own private health information, which, you know, we don't need to hear about, but if you had questions about your own health and you went to your physician or healthcare provider, they have healthcare providers at the Department of Public Health who can talk to that person and give additional information about the health effects. So if, if you want, if you want to come up to me after I can stay, I can give you the phone number for the environmental bureau at the Department of Public Health.
All right. Because my point is this, from 2018, 19, 20, 2021, I've had kidney stone issues. Anybody else here have kidney stones at any point in their life? Very painful. I did a, if you want to call an experiment where I had, well, at my house, I have the water filter under the sink, and I was doing a Brita filter as well. And probably 2019, about in the spring or in, probably in the summer, I actually had to say, I started drinking bottled water. I've been doing bottled water ever since. And I've been going every six months for ultrasounds in my kidneys. And thankfully, right now, the last ultrasound, I haven't had any kidney stones show up. So I'm just wondering if there's a correlation with the experiments that I've done. Maybe I'm an anomaly, I don't know. But if there's any residents that have had kidney stone issues, they can talk to me and confirm with me or whatever. Maybe I'm anomaly, I don't know. I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Next person, please.
I'm Chinaki, 78 Eagle Drive. If I test my well and it comes up different than your results, who's going to be held Because I'm closest to landfill and everyone around me is polluted but me. Analyst, Mr. Dergan.
Everybody else is what?
Polluted. My neighbor's well is 20 feet from mine, and he's polluted with detox chemical and the PFAS. My, mine's clean.
Well, anytime-
And then the testing company that was doing my testing is actually, was doing the dump project too. I'm just kind of wondering how that conflict of interest will come in.
So anytime you take a sample, an environmental sample of anything-
Well, I'll call the lab and have them send down a professional and take it.
So is there a question or are you just making a statement?
Well, if it comes up different than, than what happens, are you guys going to come in?
Can I finish?
The state going to come and test?
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead. Say what you want.
I'm not sure there's a question or it's just a statement.
Well, I just wanted to know if I test and my water comes up dirty, are you guys going to come in right away and retest? And can I send you the bill?
Anytime you take a sample of any kind of environmental media, it's a snapshot in time. That's what's happening at that moment in time. So your house will continue to be tested and it could change. And we have red, yellow, green maps.
Yeah, I know.
Every site, there's always red, 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 green, red, yellow, red. There's, there's no rhyme or reason.
Why did the town hire the same company doing the solar project on the landfill to take my samples?
I don't know anything about the solar project.
Oh, well, I will email you.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I let you follow up on that? Is there a requirement, I mean, you mentioned licensing requirement and testing and monitoring of LSPs. Is that, I mean, is that regulated on the state level or is that something that we make, a decision we make on a local level in terms of who's qualified to act as an LSP or who isn't?
No, the LSPs are, are licensed by the state. They're licensed by Mass DEP.
So just like, what am I on the spot? Attorney Blake, if he's my attorney, he's licensed through this Commonwealth, he's representing me in a case and he says, this is the law, and I say, no, I want to go around it this way, he's probably not going to risk his license, just thinking LSP is not going to stamp a report, and the applicant's going to tell the LSP, no, go around it a little bit more, make it look better for me, and they're going to risk their livelihood. I think that's the point of, of a conflict. Someone's going to put a stamp on a project or a court case.
Mr. Chairman, there's, we're also working with LSPs hired by Gentex-
Correct.
Sharing information.
Correct.
So it would be very difficult to decide who's going to, you know, who's going to be more, more corrupt on one side or another. Is it going to be the Gentex LSP today or are we going to be corrupt on the town side today? I just don't like the idea that we're just, you know, pulling the pin, dropping a grenade and trying to-
Right.
Pretend that there's some sort of conspiracy that doesn't exist.
Correct. And I just want to talk to Attorney Blake for a moment. In the, in the possible outcome of a test done at the exact moment in time on the exact property or the exact well by two licensed testing, they come up differently, the engineers would settle that. They would figure out what happened, either retest or, like Jonathan said, there's no collusion to, to a test and mess with the results for the want of a better term.
That, I mean, I, I don't know that that's a legal question, but, but legally, yes. I mean, if there's a conflict, I'm sure that the LSPs had the, and DEP may even require additional testing to determine, you know, what the, what the quote-unquote real outcome is. I seriously doubt you'll have, if they tested the same water, the same time, from the same place, I seriously doubt you'll have a, a huge variance. I just, just don't see it happening. There's a testing protocol as DEP representatives have indicated to us, and they send them out to labs. So I, I don't think you'll get it. You may get a variation from May to July, but at the same time, same place, I don't think you're going to get much of a variation.
All right, thank you. Anybody else like to come up? Sir? Oh, Mr. Spall, sorry. How are you?
Jay Spall from Bates Road in Dudley. Just a simple question. The proximities, these areas we're speaking about are close to the Connecticut line. Do we have anything going on as far as the town of Thompson or Woodstock for those folks?
No, I'm sorry, we don't-
As far as the spread of contamination?
Yeah, we, we don't regulate across state lines.
Okay, you don't have that authority.
Correct.
So they're on their own if something happens? As far as testing? Because I, I think that as far as those neighbors go, they're all on wells out in that region also. So-
All right, so we, we don't regulate in Connecticut. If your, if your friends, your neighbors in Connecticut have concerns, they can, they can call the state.
Okay. That answers it.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to come up?
Can I finish?
Mr. Chinaki, I'm just going to ask you, refrain from using the word poison, refrain from accusing the DEP of allowing poison into our town. If you have to come up, whatever-
Poison.
May I finish, please? If you have a valid question that's not going to require council or DEP to tell you that it's out of order, yes, you may come up.
I'm just going to read a letter, what I try publish, nobody want to publish my I am probably come from another planet. Guy come here and was complaining about road is blocking the vision or whatever. You guys bringing million tons of, of dirt and sand. And the guy is complaining about the view. I cannot understand another, just worry about his world. That million tons going to stay for there for hundred thousand of years, and this heavy metal inside going to leak to the ground. All the dump site is next to the lake. Did the DEP check the water in the lake next to all dump site, Webster, Dudley? It's all wetland nowadays. I know the area. Once I go fishing there, I catch fish with two heads. Well, that's been funny about it. It's polluted and it's going to Connecticut because that wetland is very heavy out, almost to the Thompson. And then it's going to that Potash Brook and other site on Fairview Avenue, and it's going to French River again. And you allowed million or two million tons on Oxford Avenue, next 300 feet from the French River. You got cemetery, I know the people, they don't care there, but you got large houses there. All dump site is polluted, whole area probably two miles around, not Eagle Drive. It's going around. You guys doing nothing. I am from, I know, I am from another planet. Anyway, I don't know that, what I have to say, going to run away. Give me the names of the people who signed and consented to the dis-dumps. They must resign now, all of them. This whole poison earth will be sent to Boston, let it slip on their beaches. All companies that transported this poison must take it away. Whereas there was the Webster time for so many years, he was silent after all, he knew what happening. Was, was 200,000 trucks coming? You can check me now.
I am, I'm going to ask you to step away. I asked you not to use the word poison.
No, that's what I said before.
Can I finish, please? You talked about 2 million tons, that, that's a number that-
Of dirt.
That's a number I don't think that there was a threshold reached.
Yeah, of Ford and another one.
And DEP has told you what their role in the process is?
They're going to find how many, that's what they ask for, for lawyers, they're going to find out all papers, we're going to find out in the U.
That's fine.
I hear a mouth to us.
Why you allow it? People, you bring, going to stay here forever. That, that dirt, clean dirt from Boston, next to casino, whatever. I went two, three weeks ago to Cape Cod. I used to go Malikat bathroom there, I know the spot. It was, was Marconi Beach there. I don't know if you know National Park, Marconi Beach is there? And I cross and I go over, I know how to go, go shortcut. It was no person there in the forest. I walk on that beach was polluted with thousands, thousands of crabs there. The fish-
That, that's the-
All polluted. No, I just tell you, the same stuff is in Boston, same stuff. And people were swimming in that dirty water. It was so polluted, I was in check, I took a lot of pictures of that.
Well, that's, that's-
I know, same thing is coming from Boston here.
No, because-
Why you allow it? To stay here, isolated for so many years, nobody was telling us what's going on.
So-
No, this is the problem. Let me finish.
No, no, time's up, Mr. Chinaki.
I know, okay. I am going to go national, I'm going to go national because later I'm going to talk to some people, lawyers doing nothing. You cannot threaten, I'm old guy now, you can do nothing.
Okay, that's, that's, that's fine. You have the right-
You to try keep calm, same lawyer, you can do that. You to try keep calm, same lawyer, you can do that.
You have the right to take any action you'd like, sir.
Because people are scared of-
Mr. Chanacki, your time's up, sir.
Mr. Ruda should have said, probably years ago.
Mr. Chanacki, I'm going to ask you to sit down. I'm going to ask you to sit down.
Higher, higher people.
Disruption is over.
How many minutes you going to spend?
Chief, Lieutenant.
Through the chair. Are you asking Mr. Chanacki to sit down?
Yes, I am.
Mr. Chanacki, sit down, be quiet. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Mr. Siganovich.
Yeah, I, something he brought up. Do we have the ability to not allow soil to be brought into Dudley? Or is this something that's regulated on a state or federal level?
I'm going to defer it to council.
Well, you do have the, a soil permit that you guys issue, and through that you can, you can regulate the incoming and outgoing soil. I don't know if you can totally prevent it, but you could certainly regulate.
So, one second, Carrie. So, to council, I don't want to hit you with something. The process for the permit, what would be a next step? Like, it's not an open-ended permit, correct?
That's correct. You have a bylaw that regulates soil removal.
But not importation?
I believe it may even be import to stockpile.
So we can, if the permit is up for renewal, for example, we-
I believe it's an annual.
Okay. Carrie.
So because this is a bylaw, this was voted on at town meeting, correct? The residents voted for this bylaw?
They would have had to.
Okay. So the residents can also change it if they so chose.
That's correct.
Okay. So the residents would have the ability to, at town meeting, if they wished, some sort of a petition to change the bylaw, to change that.
Excuse me, can you speak up? We can't hear him.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hold on, all the mics off, Amanda? Okay.
I usually try to keep my voice down. I know I kind of carry sometimes, but... So from what I'm gathering is, this is, this permit is governed by a bylaw, and bylaws are voted on by the residents. So at some point in time, this bylaw passed town meeting. Because it's a bylaw, and correct me if I'm wrong, please feel free to chime in if I'm wrong, because this is a bylaw, the residents have the ability to change it? Through a petition? Or, yeah? Accurate?
Accurate, except for, I mean, they can change it, except for if you try to start regulating in the context of contamination, you may run into a preemption from DEP 21E. So you can regulate what is in your bylaw. My recollection is, and I've reviewed it a number of times, is, doesn't really talk about contamination. So it's likely that you could amend it, but what I guess I'm saying is, yes, you can amend it, but I'd have to take a look at what the amendments are at all point as to whether or not certain aspects are preempted, and if they, if I thought they were, then it's unlikely that the AG would approve it.
The point I was getting at was, I don't want people to think that we're allowing this in town. I'm not sitting out there like the people at the airport with things going, "Yeah, come on in, right over here." None of us are doing that. None of us are allowing this that are sitting up here, whether it's the DEP or anyone sitting here. That's all. I wanted to get that point across. I also wanted to get the point across. If you don't like the way it is, how to change it. That's all.
And as council-
If possible.
Right. As council stated, and it's happened numerous times, some of you folks have been at plenty of town meetings. A bylaw passes, AG reviews it, it gets rejected. A bylaw passes, it gets accepted, it gets enacted. Town council makes a recommendation and says that bylaw probably won't pass. The moderator can rule it out of order. There's a lot of scenarios that come with a trying to modify and/or pass a new bylaw. Not saying you can't do it, we just recently had a, the audit committee was a hot-button issue at the previous town meeting. It passed. The AG's office, not the town of Dudley, not Mr. Ruda, not Chairman Sullivan, not anybody on this board, asked the AG's office to slow-walk any kind of approval. They approached Attorney Blake's firm and said, "We need an extension. Will the town grant it to us?" Obviously, we did because we wanted to make sure that the bylaw that passed meets legal muster. Same thing could happen with any bylaw. But there is a process, and the good thing is, the warrant's opening tonight. It's going to be open for a period of a month, Jonathan, or?
Yeah, I think it's 10 days, Mr. Douglas.
Oh, 10 days, that's a, for citizen petitions. There's a warrant that's going to be open for 10 days. You submit it. We had six or seven citizen's petitions submitted at the last town meeting. Council made a ruling, the moderator made a ruling, most of them ruled out of order. That's the process. So I'm not encouraging or discouraging. There is a process to follow, and the clock is going to be starting tonight. Anybody else like to come up? Again, we're going to let people come up that have not come up before, so if someone has come up.
Hi, Grace Shrinaki, Eagle Drive. I have the town water, but I have a question. You're planning of ripping up Eagle Drive to put in water pipes from the town, to bring the water into all those houses, right? In town of Dudley, you have three different sites where there's well issue, water issue with the water coming from the well that's contaminated. Are you doing the same thing to those other places, ripping up the town and putting the town water in, ripping up the streets? Or is it just Eagle Drive that you're doing it to?
I'm going to defer to council with your specific question on Eagle Drive, and then I'm going to defer to DEP because I believe she answered that question earlier.
Yes.
I, thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know about the other sites. The only one that I've been dealing with is Eagle Drive. I know that based on the financials and the continuing cost to maintain the point of treatment, point of entry treatments, facility, whatever, yeah, Poet Systems, that it would make more sense financially to put in a water line, and as DEP has indicated, we don't know what's coming down the road for additional contaminants and changes. Once we get a water line in there, we are done, and we will be able to not just mitigate, but we will be able to eliminate the problem. I don't know about the other sites. What I saw up there, I don't think they have the significant amount of wealth around them.
Okay, so you don't know, then don't you think you should check into it? What's the factor that you're putting Eagle Drive to have the town water where you're not even checking into the other two sites? I mean, there's an issue there, too.
I don't know personally. I'm sure, I'm sure that the town's LSP and others know that. I just don't know that off the top of my-
And I think the town should look at to those other two sites also.
I think, Mr., through the chair, I just wanted to say that-
Because I don't understand what factor is, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So the public water line is literally right there at the first house on Eagle Drive. I mean, it's sitting right there, ready to go. In West Dudley, there's no water lines, there's no aquifer, there's no ability to put a water line very easily down that road, and I think that that's the, that's the-
I know the town of Dudley has tested the water many times, and there were issues with the water going through the pipes, because I've been here over 40 years. The other issue is, so you're going to be testing those wells for, because you don't have a line going in for the water, for the town water there, so you're going to be testing those other sites, not the Eagle Drive, the other two sites, every year or every six months for the rest of the, whoever, you know, lives there?
I don't think it's, the town's not making those tests, the town, the responsible-
But it has an issue, I understand it has an issue now. So why is it that you're not taking care of that issue the same way you're taking care of the, it's still an issue?
Mr. Chair.
It's just taking care of it the same way as you're taking care of Eagle Drive, correcting it.
The town is not responsible for the other sites, and DEP does not do the cleanups. DEP is overseeing the licensed site professional working for Webco, the licensed site professional working for Mace, and they're required to comply with the regulations that I was describing before. They have six years to do all the assessment and to design a permanent solution that if it's feasible, eliminates the exposure. So they are within the time that they have on those other sites that the town is not responsible for, to do that assessment. Before you design any kind of remedy, you have to see where has the contamination gone. They haven't figured out that yet. They're still investigating. And then you design the remedy based on what's feasible. So that will come. It will not come from DEP, and it will not come from the town on those other sites.
So those people are kind of stuck in a limbo because nobody's going to be testing them, testing the water? I don't understand. Because the town, I don't understand what you're saying. The town and Gentex is responsible for the Eagle Drive. Then the town has no say in the other shoe? What they're supposed to do? You said it's just the company who's responsible, who has the saying in it?
Let me take a shot, Mr. Chairman.
I don't know, I'm just trying to understand that.
Because the town owns the landfill, specifically, my name is on the landfill. Mr. Dergen was quick to point that out to me.
Okay.
The town is the responsible party for, with Gentex to check all the wells on Eagle Drive, just as if we were Webco or-
Right, so in other words-
Or any other party.
So it's up to Webco to make sure that those people have clean water in their wells?
Right. But as much as DEP is making sure that we, we're on the straight and narrow and doing what we should be doing, Poet Systems, you know, potential water line, all that thing, they're doing the same thing with these private entities to make sure. DEP is making sure Webco needs what they need, does what they need to do, or any other corporation that's involved in it.
That's involved, so.
So it's not, it's not the town saying unilaterally, you know, the Board of Health is saying, "We need to go out and test these wells, and we're going to take care of it and manage the situation." In all cases, DEP is regulating, well, is overseeing the testing, the installation of Poets, the potential water line, the ongoing testing, the monitoring of the landfill and that sort of thing. But DEP's responsibility, and stop me when I go too far, is to make sure that the other private corporations are doing the same thing, and they are.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. But my question is then, what happens if Webco goes out of business down the line?
Good question. That's beyond my scope.
That's beyond my scope. I was going to ask you just to step aside one moment.
Okay, no, thank you.
No, wait, the Chair of the Water Commission may have your answer.
He answered, the town administrator answered what I was going to say.
Access to town water. There's none, there's none on that side of town, there's none at the bottom of Tufts Hill. Okay.
That's a mile, about a mile outside the system.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you. Anybody else want to come up with a question before we do a repeat person? Anybody that spoke earlier that wants to come up and ask a question that has not been answered or a topic that has not been covered?
On 2/6/23, the selectmen approved petroleum-based products into these sites. Was DEP aware of that? I think Mrs. Siganovich voted down, and you were in there. But yeah, on 2/6/23, petroleum-based products were voted on by the selectmen, and you can stop the dirt. You just got to vote on it like you did. Thank you.
I don't know what you're referring to. You can send an email, we can have it.
I think I remember the vote.
Well, I wasn't here. You just said I wasn't here, so.
He wasn't there, the support, oh, Siganovich.
Mr. Chairman, that was a vote that was taken that, where the state law changed, and I believe the request was from Ramco to, and I think they sent their LSP to it, and it was to approve importation from out of state. And the importation was within some-
Range?
Some range that was, was within a range that was in-state. And I know that Mr. Chanacki knows and Mr. Dergen knows, because Mr. Dergen called DEP the following morning about it. So DEP is aware of it, and it was all within, we all, everything was appropriate when the, when the vote was taken.
I mean, we can certainly dig into the particulars if we have to.
Yeah. Well, there's no need to. It was resolved in February of '23. Mr. Dergen called the next morning to file the complaint.
The complaint was resolved?
Yeah.
You guys have record of that? You must have somewhere, right?
I, I'm recalling something about importation from out of state, but it's nothing that our policy prohibits.
Okay. Mr. Dergen.
Mr. Dergen mentioned my name, so the, the meeting he's talking about was allowing MCP dirt, mass contingency plant dirt, not out-of-state dirt, which, whatever Tom said about the poly, I mean, whatever he said, petroleum-based stuff, that type of stuff. MCP dirt is the question, Mary Jude.
I don't know anything about the question. I don't know what this thing was, I don't-
Yeah, nobody really knew.
Tom, I'm going to have to ask you, that's your warning, next, you're going to be leaving. Thank you.
Hey, go out, just luck the meeting, figure it out. You weren't there. Carrie, you voted it down. Jana, you weren't there. You two guys voted in favor. And Marcy voted in favor, too. Anything else?
No, we're good. Are you good?
Yeah, I'm good. He keeps mentioning my name. I don't know, he's got it.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak or be heard on the matter? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Mary Plant, 34, Fishford. I just have a quick question. Is every truck that comes in, the soil, is it supposed to be tested from where it's coming from or when it comes to us? Is, I just was curious, is the, every truck supposed to be tested, the soil, and if it's over a certain thing, it's not supposed to come to our site? Am I correct in that, or I'm just kind of-
I think I know the answer, but I'm going to allow, I'm going to ask Mark or Mary Jude.
So every, every generating property that's sending soil has to send a package, that, a lab package that characterizes what's in that soil. Then there is a monthly third-party inspector that also comes onto the site, not the same LSP that had looked at that acceptance package, and he randomly tests a truck that comes into the property. Then while that test is ongoing, they put that truck aside and quarantine it until they get the lab results. And if it's shown that it doesn't meet the acceptance criteria, it's sent back. The place that sent it has to, has to explain why that happened, and no other dirt from that place can, can come to the soil facility until that's resolved between them.
But if, if you found the one truck, but there's other trucks that's already been dumping there-
Right.
So what happens with that soil that's already been dumped there? Does that get taken back out? I'm just curious about how that works.
No, it does not get taken out.
So then the soil's already been contaminated and it's staying there?
Well, that one batch that they tested coming in may not have the same soil profile as-
Okay.
-as another truck. Soil is very heterogeneous, and they sample, they sample at a rate of one per 500 cubic yards for certain types of soils, like soils coming from industrial, commercial properties, native clean fill, native clean sand, they sample at a rate of one per 1,000 cubic yards.
So if soil is contaminated, especially like chemicals they can put in to help defer what's there, is, how do they clean that up? They remove it, or, I'm just curious how that works?
I think what Mark was saying is that just because it was in that one truck doesn't mean it was in a lot of other trucks. There's no way of knowing, but the soil is not all the same out of sight. You're digging at different depths, you're digging over here where there was no development ever, so there's no, there's no way to tell.
No, but I mean, if you found the soil that is there, if it's been contaminated and you find like PFOS or anything else, like too much arsenic is in there, how do they, how do you treat, is it get, does it get treated or do, does it get taken out of there? I'm just curious, how does that work? You know, you have piles of dirt, and you found one pile that has, that has the contamination and another pile isn't, but another one does have it. How do they clean that up? I'm just curious how that works. Do you understand where I'm coming from? I'm just-
Yeah, it just, it doesn't, it doesn't sort of fit the way the regulations work. It's, there are reportable concentrations, and you can have dirt that's below those. It still has contaminants in it, but we set limits where you have to tell us about it, have to go through all these steps that we were talking about, but if it's below that but it's above zero, it's, it's not something that we would regulate. But it has chemicals in it.
Now, this estate, stop trucks like when they're en route? Do they pull trucks over and stop them to just test them randomly? Does that-
We don't have jurisdiction over trucks on the road, and we don't have requirements that trucks be stopped midstream to be sampled. We don't do any of this sampling. This is all the licensed site professional for the generating site and the licensed site professional, third party, at the receiving site. DEP is not doing any of this testing.
So is that, like, they have a list of things that they have to go through, like list of chemicals that, that's supposed to be allowed, and if they find when it gets to them that, that company basically that sent it to that site lied, then they can go after that site, say, you know, "You're sending us contaminated stuff that, you know, we're in trouble, we're going to get in trouble," that, you know?
The package that Mark was referring to is laboratory data. It's coming from a certified lab. It's not a written report that somebody produces just on their own. What they're looking at with the LSP at the receiving site is looking at, and we review, is laboratory sheets that show all the levels of the constituents in it. And so on a day-to-day basis, the licensed site professional is working with that. We can at any time look at it as well, but it's not, the LSP is going to make some conclusions, but the- conclusions, but the data is what determines whether it's there or not there. It's not, it's not a subjective truth, untruth. It's laboratory data.
So if they, the dirt came from somebody else, the people that received the dirt are not really responsible, the people that it came from is, is responsible then? Like, like say, if Ramco has accepted dirt and they find that this level is above what they had gone to, so they can go after the site that it came from, am I correct?
Correct.
They're, they're basically the ones, not Ramco would be responsible, but the other people, they go after them because they've now contaminated...
Right.
Their site.
That's what, that's, I need the owner, the operator, anybody who generated it, anybody who transported it, there's a whole chain of people who are liable.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
One, one thing I'd like to point out, too, about the acceptance criteria, we have the, the reportable concentration. So if you're above a reportable concentration for a contaminant, that, that's a disposal site. That's, you know, that's considered contaminated. If you're below the reportable concentration, it's not considered, uh, contaminated to the point where it's part of a disposal site. Our acceptance criteria for these soil reclamation facilities is set generally at ten percent of the, the reporting criteria. So the reporting criteria are conservative anyhow, and for these soil reclamation facilities, we're setting the acceptance criteria way down at ten percent of those reportable concentrations.
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. And thank you for setting this up for us, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Anybody else that would like to come up that hasn't spoken yet?
Hi, Sandy Leachill from West Dudley. I would appreciate if somebody would just correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds to me even more tonight, listening to everybody, the comments and the very helpful information that we've gotten here tonight, that this soil reclamation business is pretty risky. It's risky for the owner of the property, it's risky for the people who operate it, it's risky for the people who live near it. And I just would like to, you know, to ask people to keep asking questions and to keep gathering information, because I'm not really sure that it belongs here, in our town. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you for setting this up, we appreciate it.
Well, thank you. And I just wanna ask the DEP folks, because we had Sean Healy back talking about Eagle in Fairview a year or so back. There's also other potential sources of contamination at, at generic sites. I mean, we've been talking about Fish Road. There's also, there's a, also potential other contamination sources which are being examined and tested and, and reporting to you folks by a licensed LSP or an engineer who's testing this, putting his stamp on it and sending it to a lab, who puts their Johnny Hancock on it, but there are potentially other sources of contamination.
For, for, for eagle, for Eagle Drive?
For anywhere, well, for Eagle Drive, we're pretty sure it's the two parties.
Yeah.
But any other potential site, I mean, there was...
So it's, it's a hard, it's a hard question to answer without sounding like just a pointy-headed bureaucrat, but the Commonwealth only needs one. So if we have somebody who's a responsible party, that's the party we can choose to have clean it up. That party's gonna wanna find other people. So the LSPs on sites are always eager to find somewhere else that the contamination came from or some other party who's also responsible. But in our regulatory world, everyone is responsible for a hundred percent, even if there are twenty of them, and all nineteen of them go bankrupt and there's one left, we can go after that one for a hundred percent. So the interest of the parties drives their desire to find other people to share the costs. But DEP is not looking for sixty, forty, thirty, seventy, a, the liability exists to the Commonwealth. It just is. It's strict liability. We don't have to prove anything. It's called status liability. You're an owner, you're an operator, transporter, you're a generator, you own the liability. Among themselves, they can apportion the cost however they want. I'm not sure if that's a helpful answer.
No, I, I, no, I get it. Any questions from the public that haven't come up yet? Any questions at all? All right, then we're gonna close this portion of our agenda. Again, thanking representatives from DEP who have offered to stay. I, I ask if you're gonna talk to them, you can wait till the meeting's over, if they wanna meet you in the hallway. I don't wanna have the lieutenant have to go out there and stand, just keep the questions civil, they're gonna exchange information. Please use it for official questions and channels only. I thank them. Thank Attorney Blake, if you have any questions for him, he'll, he'll stick around for a couple of minutes. Again, Mary Jude said it earlier, I wanna thank Mr. Ruda for setting this meeting up. I think it's been very helpful. Again, stick to, stick to, to town's website. We will be having a meeting in, sometime in October, hopefully, with, uh, the operator of two of the sites in town. Um, at some point, if we need to involve the other two sites in town, we can reach out to them also. But please just stay involved, um, reach out, if they've indicated, contact them via email or reach out to them. Attorney Blake's a little bit different, he works for the town, but he works for us and generates the bill. Send questions through the selectman's office and we will try to get answers back to you as quickly as possible. But again, thank you all. I appreciate that for the most part, it was respectful and people played by the rules. But thank you all for coming, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the...
Thank you for having us.
Agenda. Thank you again, Mary, coming in, Mary Jude. Hi, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Attorney Blake, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
I had to ask you a question.
Let me see if I can get back on my agenda here. I'm gonna, um, defer to the... I'm gonna defer to the clerk of the board.
I didn't, sir, I didn't say anything.
No, my, fine. Okay, so we're gonna move on to, uh, five C, October twenty-first.
You're in a meeting still, ma'am, so you can wait for citizens' comments?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I just wanted to see if I could set up a time where we can meet one-on-one about the private well.
I wouldn't be the one...
Whoever.
Call, yeah, call. Yeah, call, reach out to the office.
Please.
Thank you. Jana will now continue on with the agenda.
Yeah, so we're gonna move on to, um, five C in public business, um, the October twenty-first, twenty-two, four special town meeting warrant. Board of Selectmen votes to open the special town meeting warrant at nine AM on September tenth, twenty-two, four, and to close the warrant at nine AM on September twenty-third, twenty-two, four.
Channel, obtain a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mr. Johnson, second by Mrs. Sigunovich. All in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. I'm back online here, thank you, Jana.
You're so welcome.
Unless you wanna continue.
No, that's all.
Board of Selectmen will vote for the town administrator to authorize, vote for the town administrator to authorize the town to join a class action lawsuit for cost incurred outside of the general fund, associated treatments, testing mitigation, remediation of PFOS and emerging contaminants. Mr. Ruda, you wanna explain that before we...
There's a sample motion that I handed out before the meeting. I think Mr. Shane's here.
Clerk, clerk, can read the motion?
So, um, just, you asked me to explain, so I'll, I'll do that quickly. Um, the, the Board of Selectmen has authorized me to sign on, to sign on the town's behalf, I don't know, probably over a year ago, to join with a, with a law firm so that the water sewer enterprise account could go ahead and be part of this class action suit. We wanna make sure that the, the Eagle Drive issues and the other issues that, in town that fall outside of the scope of money spent from the enterprise system can be recovered as well, so the attorneys recommended that we reauthorize the retainer to include any money outside of the jurisdiction of the, of the enterprise accounts.
Yes, well, just as a point of reference, this is some of what we did years back with the ExxonMobil, was it gas, petroleum?
It was way at the beginning of, here comes Scott.
Well, I, I was hanging out around, I've gotta get up at three o'clock to go to work. Uh, but, um, the, I just wanted, was wondering if this was the same as what, we've been involved in class action for three years, um, involving PFOS and, um, I would just...
It is the same. For the chair, it is the same, we just wanna make sure that you, you authorized me to sign on behalf of the enterprise account, accounts, the water and sewer. We wanna make sure that we've covered everything that falls outside of their jurisdiction so that we can recover any money spent for other projects that, such as Eagle Drive, private well testing.
Okay, all right, all right, yeah, we signed on, it was basically for public water supply.
Yeah.
You're, you're looking at, okay.
I'm gonna read the motion. We move that the Board of Selectmen, in addition to the prior authorization vote for matters under the jurisdiction of water sewer enterprise system, further authorize a town administrator to retain the law firm of Napoli Skalaknik as our attorneys to prosecute any legal claims of negligence or other viable causes of action against any and all parties, individuals and/or corporations that are found to be liable under law for injuries and/or property damage suffered by the town of Dudley arising out of the contamination of water supplies of wastewater by PFOS substances, one-four dioxide, plastics, microplastics, landfills, and other hazardous water contaminants. Is there a motion to what I just read? I'll make the motion, give her a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Sigunovich. Anybody else wanna parse that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Next up, approval of minutes, August nineteenth, twenty-two, four.
So moved.
Multiple movers and seconds, any questions or corrections?
You know, he can move it outside.
Moved by Mr. Johnson, second by Mrs. Sigunovich, any corrections or...
Nope.
All in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Departmental Communication, Rich, would you like to go first tonight? Town Treasurer, Collector.
I look at the clock and I'll pass. Of course, I'll extend out to the board if there is a question on anything for an upcoming meeting, please reach out, I'm happy to provide information, thank you.
Thank you, Town Treasurer. Town Accountant, is she still here? Yes, oh, would you like to come up?
Really quickly, um, Scanlon started their audit today and they should be with us for maybe seven days or so, but, um, we're working towards finalizing the finances for last year.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Petrinos, water sewer.
Uh, just so that everybody know, hydrant flushing's gonna be beginning. If you're having a problem with dirty water, uh, just let it go for about fifteen minutes or so, it should clear up, and if it doesn't, just give the water department a call, we'll help you out.
Thank you. Mr. Gasky, highway, beaches, cemeteries, building and grounds.
No, place a day for seven days.
If I've left something out, I apologize.
Recently just bought a used catch-piston truck, um, got it registered, so we'll be out using that. Um, a new body was a hundred and seventy-five thousand, we bought this one for nine thousand dollars. Um, we're gonna be paving the end of the month, Tufts Hill Road number two and Northwest Schoolhouse Road. Um, I got some money from National Grid to help pay for that. And we're gonna be also paving on Wednesday, Marsh Road in Bonneview, so we'll be doing that.
Thank you. Fire EMS, police. Board Member Comments, Mr. Johnson?
I think, I think we had a, a helpful session from the DEP and from Attorney Blake, so appreciate them coming here and the questions that were asked.
Excellent. Mr. Landry?
No, sir.
Mr. Shane's. Sigunovich?
Uh, two things. I'm excited that there will be a place in Dudley where you can sit down and have a breakfast that's not a sandwich, that's a good thing. Second thing, uh, MJ, I've gotten this from a couple people and I wanna, uh, I wanna agree with them, the rail trail, I know there might have been some, eh, about it being paved, but that paving job is just stellar, the edges, right up to the edge, and when you see somebody taking their, taking their parrot out for a walk, and they got them behind the wheelchair going around, the, the smile on that, that old fellow's face...
We still have a little bit more work to do, but you gotta get some of our work done before we go.
Good stuff, good stuff, thank you. And I think other than that, I've said enough today, so I'll be done, thank you.
I would like to add, uh, on behalf of the Veterans Service Officer of the Dudley Veterans Council, September eleventh, twenty-third anniversary, the attack on the World Trade Center, uh, those that celebrate it, there will be a gathering at eight-thirty at the Webster Fire Station. Event will be done by nine o'clock to coincide with the time of the first attack in the, to the cell tower of the World Trade Center. Anyone that would like to participate is welcome to attend. Um, if not, take a moment to honor those that lost their lives that day. Board, entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Sigunovich, move, second by Mr. Johnson, if anybody doesn't wanna go? Unanimous.